Special meeting of the Motley Village Board for December 3rd. The time is now seven thirty-nine. If you will rise for the Pledge of Lidges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Batista, do we have an indication of where? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Brasek. Is that here?
Over the public, agenda items only. Please let me hear your comments for three minutes. Come to the podium and give your name and address, please. Okay. No takers. With the board's permission, there's a few of these are rather short items. I've been asked to adjust them so we can get some of the people that don't need to be here for the bulk of this, allow them to move on. Mr. Batista, do you want to guide us through this? I believe you had a couple items up front, and then you wanted to go into the attorney's report as well.
Yes.
Yes, sir. First is the phone system contract and fiber contract. In your package, you have a proposal by Urban. And to, just to confirm, that is a thirty-day billing. The board had asked just to confirm that, and that is correct. There's a thirty-day billing cycle. We have thirty days to pay the bill with no fees. And the other is for, I believe it was for the length of the contract, which is confirmed that it's five years, and it is a renewable contract. And for the Internet, the fiber connect is three hundred dollars a month. And it is the same contract terms with fiber.
And I believe it's a slightly similar payout. It's a similar name because of how the mayor and managers have the management provision for the fiber services, but it's, one is, what was it again? One was Urban for the phones, Urban County, and the other was something or another, fiber service, something or another?
Correct. Urban Fiber Operations, and the other one is Urban Communications for the phone system.
All right. I believe the, or a resolution at least, to approve the contract?
A motion.
A motion?
Yeah, a motion, a resolution. You need two separate motions, and, do you need two separate motions since this is two bills?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the phone system contract.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Okay, Pop and Horn, I'll need a resolution number. I'm going to say I have a lane up here nicely.
He has a stream in his face. That'll be twenty-fourteen dash ten.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion for a resolution approving the fiber contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Gonzalez and Holston, roll call, please.
On the floor, we have a roll call.
Yes, sir.
Just for the public's benefit, they met a couple of requirements that we wanted fulfilled at our last meeting.
Correct.
So I just want the public to realize that we went over the contract, and we wanted some things done, and you answered those today. That's why there's no discussion going on, and I don't accept.
This is the second review of the situation, correct? Resolution number twenty-fourteen dash?
Eleven.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
And I believe, Mr. Batista, you wanted us to go to the attorney's report at this time.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to lead into that for the discussion, or how do you want to deal with that?
Just as...
I know it was taken from the last meeting.
Correct. Just to bring the public up to date. High Street made a proposal to extend the TIF notes and made the request, and asked the board to make a consideration, and now we would like to readdress that request.
So if I could, I know that the board was encouraged to contact you after the last meeting. I'm assuming that they all made some contact with you at some point to voice their...
Yes, sir.
Okay. And where do we stand, Larry? I know you were going to draft something.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Basically, to reiterate the position, the status of negotiations is that High Street Equity is asking to extend the TIF in that area, I believe on Milton Avenue, to two thousand and three twenty-six. They have a respect, we hope they have a prospective tenant or buyer for this area, I'm not sure yet, but in consideration of the village extending this TIF to that area, they have agreed to, proposalally, to reduce their pledge from ninety percent to eighty percent on the incremental property tax. There would be zero percent interest rate on this new note. They would also agree to pay us roughly, approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards some improvements in that area, what is appropriate.
Just to clarify, was there stipulation how that money was being used, or was that just, I just want to clarify that. Okay.
Ms. Reardon, who's been present before, is here tonight. I know she's getting some questions from her client as to where we stand. We did indicate, we would put on the agenda key, we were informed. They're under some time constraint along with the village, but this is a test of our negotiations at this present time.
And one of the items, I know that, I don't think you can, I haven't seen any written copy of what you have, is, do you have something?
I did, Your Honor. I failed to send it to Mr. Batista. I have a couple versions, which I can give to the board for the next consideration for the board meeting. Basically, it would reiterate what I just indicated, also break down when the note was first established. We did cancel one note. Then we assigned a note to the ceremony, the ceremony assigned it over to Mayor's present client, which is High Street Equities. I do have some provisions in the agreement with respect to the terms in the note, what we would like to do. And this note would be indicating that note would be paid on three conditions, or be satisfied. One, once we paid all the funds, if available, to pay for the TIF eligible cost. Two, which would be somewhat difficult, two would be upon a date certain, which would be December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, or three, when the current TIF expires by law. So one, whichever comes first. If one of those three, whichever comes first, then the note is satisfied and forth. That's how it would be presented, I think.
I'm sorry, real quick. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Mary, was that, you can be fair, that's fine. Was that, those three conditions, you're okay with those, correct?
Absolutely.
There would be, obviously, based on eighty percent, there would be additional increment available to the village on an annual basis. They, again, it's a, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF, so there's no general obligation behind this. If they do find a tenant, obviously, at that point in time, acre will be coming in to pay the note. If they don't find a tenant, the village is not liable. Reliable only if there's a tenant and there's sufficient funds to pay the note from the incremental property tax. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
This would be transferable, then, if they sell the properties?
They'd be asked for that, and honestly, it's very common. This situation, this is a four-time transfer. Move from Bailey Ridge to LaSalle purchaser, LaSalle money, I think, LaSalle money to High Street Equity, and High Street Equity, if they deem appropriate, it doesn't affect our responsibility, it just affects our responsibility with respect to payment. It won't affect the interest rate, which the terms aren't, but a lot of buyers will use this as potential collateral.
Well, and that was my point, it's likely it's going to be sold, because that's what they do with these type of properties, but that makes it more attractive to potential buyers from the village than to...
In fact, the first one, we signed a redevelopment agreement with Bailey Ridge. On two thousand and four, we issued a note on two thousand and five. The note was assigned in two thousand and six. So within two years, it was already assigned to LaSalle money purchaser.
Kind of like buying a house.
Yeah. It's good scenario.
An additional question I have is, part of the agreement that they're looking for didn't allow for them to, just so that everybody's aware, the dynamics of this, were they also asking for the ability to add more TIF-eligible expenses to the qualifier?
Yes, sir. If they, remember, they have to renovate that facility. It's a seven out of a thousand square foot building. So they'll either have to put more docks in, maybe set, put some separation walls, and if they incur additional TIF-eligible expenses, they have the right to ask to, to add them, to increase the size of the note. They're all TIF-eligible expenses. It won't affect our pledge, it won't affect any terms of note other than the amount for the size of the note. But they have to come back to the village, go past Ruben and DJ with respect to what improvements are going to be, will have to approve if they're TIF-eligible expenses, which we've done before, and everybody else. But they will incur, they're not sure yet how much it will be, but they will incur substantial expenses in order to renovate the building.
Do we need to put anything in this agreement stipulating not to exceed for the additional eligible expenses?
We can. The only problem, Mayor, at this point in time, I'm not sure they're going to handle that. They don't know if I'm...
Mary, you can start.
Yeah, if I may, you know, one of the things, as Larry said, the pledge is eighty percent. So if they came up with, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars in costs, it doesn't matter, it's fifteen, it's eighty percent, limited by time or the expiration of the TIF. So, you know, there's no way it could become a runaway obligation of the village, because it's limited by what it is.
Right. Understood. So theoretically, if you add a million dollars, two million dollars to your renovation cost, but they don't actually cause a change in the property tax?
That's right.
Then it really doesn't change our requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's a good point, because they're not going to, the renovations are going to make how much it's going to increase depending on the property, that's what you're saying.
It may not even be known from the outside.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to weigh in on that, too. For the record, this is a mission property that I manage currently for another company. There are knockout panels on the north side, when this facility was built and put in. A knockout panel would allow them to put the doors on the north side, which would be an attractive option to what we have right now with sound issues over there, and probably make it a lot more attractive for them to be able to do something with the building. It is a building that has three separate firewalls, so it could literally be divided into thirds really easily, and utilized that way as well. So this is probably a good opportunity for the village to turn this property use around moving forward with a new owner as well. That being said, I will pass on voting because I am involved.
Mr. Batista, you've been the one that's been managing, along with Larry, the negotiations on this. Are we ready for a preliminary vote at this point, or do we still need time to work out any nuances? I know they're looking for some lead on this. Between the two, I'm just deferring to either one of you.
If I may, Your Honor, I believe if the board gives a consensus to finalize the note under these terms, and Mary feels comfortable that these are the terms that the client can live with, a final vote can be taken December tenth. But these are the terms that I would put in the ordinance, and all it would do is issue a new note, authorizing the mayor to sign the new note on behalf of the village of Moni, but these would be the basic terms. And so if I get, if the board wants to give a consensus to proceed accordingly, I think they'll give Mary some comfort level, and she can contact her client, and then we get to the final adoption, December tenth.
If, and I've been somewhat out of the deliberation on this, Mr. Batista, do you feel the board is ready for a vote?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to approve the development agreement as orally stipulated, and for a signed by the written copy to be presented for the next board meeting.
For final approval.
This is a preliminary, this is just a consensus to...
Consensus to vote.
To give some idea of that the terms are acceptable.
Consensus, not an actual vote.
Well, correct. We're not, we're not in a press conference, we have your right to write. Just sign it and read it.
Yeah. For a consensus.
All right. Mr. Gray?
Second.
Mr. Pop? Roll call.
Trustee Horn? Yes. Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston? Trustee?
I believe that's adequate to the...
Yes, sir.
So Mary, we'll, between Larry and Ruben, you, I'm sure by next week we'll have something that will be ratable, I'm sorry, ratable and will be voted on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me go early on the agenda.
No problem.
Hey, you guys stick around.
I love that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Batista, where do you want to, let me just clarify, you got open to the public in the administrative's report, we jumped into the attorney's report. I don't believe we have any reason for executive session. I entertain a motion to, no, I'm just kidding. I like that, well. I take the legit, I want to go, guys.
If we can continue to the heart of the matter tonight, we want to talk about a comprehensive plan, and want to present to the board, and I don't want to steal their time or thunder, but Tyson Engineering will work with DJ, putting together our most critical needs, rank them, we have that form in front of you, with a cost estimate. Obviously, these are not engraved in stone, it is an estimate, but just to give the board an idea of what we're looking at infrastructure-wise, our critical needs over the next few years. And without further ado, I'm going to turn over to Jeff Agin from Tyson Engineering.
You guys probably want to come down, because we're going to have full screen, though.
I would like to, sir.
You can.
All right. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to come tonight, and talk about pavement maintenance and infrastructure improvements. I am, I am Mr. Jeff Agin from Tyson Engineering, and Keith Mahon from our offices are on as well. So November twenty-first, the village staff called us to Village Hall for a meeting to discuss pavement maintenance and infrastructure improvements throughout the village. The village staff expressed a need for G S capabilities and the need for development of multi-year pavement maintenance plan. They had determined to list the thirty-one roadways to consider initially for maintenance or rehabilitation. They indicated a desire to look for various funding sources for the industrial drive utilities improvements, and indicated they would like to explore bonding as a funding source to consider in accomplishing these goals. So we're here to talk a little bit about pavement maintenance and why it is important. Payment maintenance consists of various methods to preserve or replace the wearing surface of a roadway. And the wearing surface is the surface course, which is the very top layer of asphalt. So this is a typical roadway section for an asphalt pavement here. And, sir, the typical sections consist of an aggregate base, which is the thickest portion, asphalt binder course, which is what's shown in blue, and then an asphalt surface course, which is the top layer. And generally, well, roads are typically constructed with two percent cross slope, that's to get the water off of the pavement. The biggest goal is to get water away from a roadway. The biggest enemy of a roadway is, is water. So what happens over time is the surface course will crack, and water will infiltrate in, and that's, that's a bad thing. As it infiltrates in, and you get freeze and thaw, it causes that surface to pop. Eventually, the same thing will happen with the binder course, and the binder course will start to crack, and you'll get infiltration into your aggregate base and your subbase. And when that occurs, you start having big-time pavement failures, and the cost for the rehabilitation to improve that road jumps significantly. And many of the, as we drove around town, many of the roadways within the town don't have that two percent cross slope, and they're relatively flat, and a lot of the roadways, it appears, just by looking at it from the surface, wasn't even constructed with the typical pavement sections like you can see today on a new roadway. So the first method for pavement maintenance is crack sealing. The process that involves routing or cleaning out the cracks and placing a sealer through the cracks. The estimated cost is two dollars to three dollars a, you know, foot of cracking, and this is used to extend the life of a roadway. It's relatively cheap, and it minimizes the infiltration of water into the pavement. And this can be used when you have relatively minor cracking, where you don't have all the little spider crack in that stems off of the main crack. The next technique is a surface grind and overlay. This consists of grinding the existing asphalt off. You may have seen one of these grinder machines around, that will actually peel off and grind off that surface course, and what you're left with then is a surface that's, that looks similar to this, it's got the grooves in it. So, once the surface comes off, then we can look at the binder and analyze it and see what the base, or see what that, the condition of that binder is and the base underneath it as well. If there's potholes, or the binder itself is cracking, that requires patching. So at that point, then, we would come through and cut out the bad parts, put three D six inches of asphalt patch in there, depending upon how severe the deterioration was. And then after the patching's done, you can replace curb, if there's curb failures, replace the storm inlets if you've got some infiltration under the grates, and then final step is overlaying it, and then, and rolling it. And at that point, then, you'll have a complete, brand-new surface that's going to keep the moisture out. So the estimated cost for a standard grinded overlay is in the neighborhood of twenty dollars per square yard, or thirty-five dollars per square yard, just kind of depends upon the, how severe the failures are, the failures are in the subbase, and how much curb needs to come out, and, and patching quantities. So this is a benefit, is that it extends the roadway life by performing minimal base repairs, and you're only replacing the wearing surface itself, that top inch and a half, two inch is the surface. So here's a few pictures. This first picture here is of a brand-new roadway in Kankakee County, and everyone's driven on them. Looks pretty good, no, no cracking, the water's going to stay out of that pavement. It's going to shoot drain off away into the ditch, at least for the, for the time being. This next picture, then, is actually a appalling road, adjacent to the Country Hills of Moni subdivision. You can see there's some cracking throughout the various portions of the roadway, and there is some spider and finger cracking coming off it. And so this would not necessarily be a good candidate for crack sealing, but more of the grinded overlay method. The two pictures below, the one is Chestnut, just south of Wilson, and I believe the other one is Margaret or William Street. You can see this is some more substantial alligator cracking. This would not be the candidate for crack sealing. This would be a grinded overlay, but there would be more patching, most likely, on this roadway. A lot of these areas may have aggregate base failure, or subbase failure, and that would , you know, require additional patching more so than a roadway like Pauling Road would have. So we're moving down to some a little more deteriorated roads. That's Middle Point there, we have Roosevelt and Margaret. You can see there's alligatoring, but in addition to that alligatoring, now you're getting more potholes. You can tell that there's cold patch, DJ's probably been out there a bunch of times throwing cold patch in to keep the roadway as smooth as possible. So this also, then, would be grind and overlay, most likely, with patching, but there's even more patching than, like I said, like Pauling or Chestnut would have had. And so the more patching, you know, the more costs. So it's important to maintain that surface and to get that surface to keep that water out, because that water is what's, a large part of this, is causing these failures. This last picture here on the bottom right is a bridge line south of Brunns. And as you can see, going all the way down that lane, you've got rutting and pavement failure, there's subbase failure, and this road probably would require more than just your standard grind overlay and patching, because the patching is going to be so substantial that the cost is going to just run through the roof. Last sets of pictures that we have here, these three are Sunset west of I-57. See the severe alligator in here? If we move over to this picture, you can see that the more potholes, the whole thing is full of potholes, with cold patches been placed. Then we get a little further down the road, and there's not even any asphalt there. It's just all, just disappeared and gone. And then, this is Linden here, and you can see, same thing, you've got your alligatoring, you're seeing big areas of asphalt that, that's disappearing as well. So these roads would require more than just a grind and an overlay, a little more substantial rehabilitation, and Keith, Michael from office is going to explain a couple of other methods that you can use at that point.
Thanks, Jeff. Full dump reclamation is one rehabilitation method that can be used when patching or minimal overlay is not sufficient anymore. The machine in the top picture is best described as a giant roteller. What it does is it grinds up about ten inches of whatever's in the ground. It'll grind up asphalt, chip seal roads, aggregate, clay, sand, and basically mixes all those together, and then the company will come through and lay down about a two-inch layer of cement powder. Cement is the bonding agent in concrete. That's what holds all the aggregate together and helps give it its strength. They will then mix this a second time, add water to it, they will roll it out, grate it, and by the end of a working day, whatever section that they have worked on is a driving surface. It's not a finished product, but it can be open to traffic over the evening. We had a project in Mantino, the state improved its frontage road, turned it back over to the village, and it had been a maintenance nightmare ever since it was turned over. We had, every year we were putting patching into it, it was kind of a money pit. We had patches two feet deep, we used concrete, asphalt, it didn't matter. Year after year, the same patches would fail, we'd have to replace them. We went ahead and completed a full dump reclamation project. It's been several years now, and we haven't had to touch it, and there's no signs of any distress in the pavement, so we're expecting it to last several years before any work is needed. The one disadvantage to this over a grind and overlay is you see the cost is starting to go up, so now you're up to the forty to fifty dollar square yard range. Again, it's, it's still cheaper than a full pavement replacement, but when roads deteriorate to a certain point, now your maintenance costs start going up rather quickly. Another method is the roadway reconstruction. This is kind of a Cadillac version of the road improvement. It's also the most expensive. This involves removing the pavement, curbing gutters, it might even remove, involve regrading ditches or removing sidewalks. The reason for that is if your local drainage issues or whatnot will be addressed when you do a road reconstruction. Parts of the project will include a new aggregate base, they might even include undercuts of the existing subbase, which is the dirt that the aggregate sits on, just depends on what kind of shape they're in. But you've got a new aggregate base, either regraded ditches or new curbing gutter, and possibly new sidewalks, and then the new binder and surface course for asphalt. And then the new binder and surface course for asphalt. When you're done, it's a very nice road, it's designed to whatever standards you need for that area, whether it's industrial or residential, but it also has a long construction time. Everybody's been through work zones and knows how slowly this goes. The cost is, you see though, one hundred forty-five to two hundred forty dollars a square yard. Again, the price of not maintaining roads and if they get to a certain point and have to reconstruct it, the costs go up quite a bit. The full depth reclamation is quite a bit cheaper than this, but there's certain instances where that won't work. It doesn't work well in topsoil conditions. So if you have a road that may only have an inch or two of asphalt and a couple inches of aggregate, the full depth reclamation is cheaper, but it won't work as well because the topsoil has a lot of organics and moisture and that'll still tend to settle over time. In that case, you actually have to excavate all the topsoil and put in a full depth, uh, pavement section. So these are the two options of reconstruction. Again, they, they provide a more lasting solution than maybe just a, a crack seal or a mill and overlay, but they also come with a much deeper price tag.
So this map here shows, uh, all the roadways in black are the roadways that are maintained by the village. And of those roadways, uh, the roadways outlined in red here are the thirty-one that the village staff had asked us to, to look at and to generate estimates. So basically what we did is we went out and drove each of the roadways, measured the dimensions of the roadways, uh, figured out the, the areas and evaluated the, the condition of each roadway. Uh, we checked the, see the condition of the, as far as the cracking, the potholes, just look at the surface course itself to see how much it had worn. Uh, some of the areas, you could actually see where the asphalt was coming up and you could get an idea of actually how much asphalt was out there. That's where you had kinda noticed, you know, some of these roadways, you know, may not have a whole lot of asphalt on them and, uh, and don't have a whole lot of crown, which is going to, uh, you know, allow that infiltration of water in and just accelerate the deterioration. Um, so we determined the most cost-effective rehabilitation methods, whether, you know, be ma- ma- uh, maintenance or crack sealing or FDR, which is the full, uh, depth reclamation Keith just spoke about. Um, and then we generated preliminary cost opinions for each of those roadways. So, uh, village staff had also asked that we incorporate costs for Phase One and Phase Two of the water and sanitary sewer improvements for the industrial drive area. That we had, uh, looked at a kind of a study of this area, uh, back in, at Coward and had broken it out into four separate phases. Um, Phase Three and Four, of which was south of Industrial Drive. So the next two slides are basically Industrial Drive and North. And, um, this here is, is a wastewater improvement, uh, for the, the sanitary system. And Phase One is this lift station, uh, would be constructed near, uh, the south end of Whiting Way. And, uh, we've installed Force Main and the sanitary sewer back. This is where Budrick, uh, trucking facility is, uh, proposed to go. And then we continue west and then up Sunset. Um, and these phases are all arbitrary, they can change based upon funding, based upon a need. It's understanding that there may be some additional people looking to develop south of Industrial Drive. It's all, uh, it's just arbitrary as far as the phasing goes. Uh, so Phase Two, what we considered was extending it, uh, extending west, I'm sorry, east then, from that lift station toward Governor Highway to the asphalt plant, up and, uh, serving the unsuared areas to the west of Governor's Highway, as well as extending the sanitary sewer north along Sunset, uh, up to the vacant lot. That's at the, uh, the north end of Sunset. And similar to the wa- the sanitary, the wastewater here, the, the water improvements. Uh, again, in red is Phase One, which would be tying onto the existing main, near Whiting Way, extending it west past Budrick, over to Sunset, and then up to, say, uh, serve the gray ladder. Uh, in Phase One, which is not included as, as, as part of the plans that's being developed right now, um, is a water tower, seven hundred fifty thousand gallon, uh, elevated tank is included in these costs, um, as part of Phase One. And then Phase Two would then be, uh, to extend the water and complete the loop from, uh, the, the, uh, the dead end up on Cleveland down to Sunset. And then also, uh, there's a portion over here, uh, north of Industrial Drive and west of Governor's that does not have water. And so, uh, Phase Two would include, um, extending the, the water main and completing the loop, uh, toward World's Kitchen back towards Governor Highway.
Where is World's Kitchen in this? Do you?
Uh, right here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so yeah, so I, I-57 is over here, Industrial Drive is along here, and then that's Governor's Highway. So we then, uh, generated the, uh, preliminary, then here's a kind of a cost of construction for, uh, they included the, the thirty-one roadways. Uh, some of those are Eagle Fair, they're all kind of lumped into one item there. We have the Phase One of the Industrial Drive, sanitary water, Phase Two. And they're ranked then based upon input from the village staff and then the actual condition of the various roadways. And, um, as you can see, the total is up near thirteen, um, million. Oh, seven million of which is, uh, associated with the sanitary and the water improvements. So, kind of a cost summary then, back to the roadways. The crack sealing is by far the, the cheapest, the, the two to three dollars, uh, per linear foot of cracking. It will extend the, the life of the roadway, um, but, you know, it's not a permanent solution. Uh, but it may be a good, uh, economical decision, uh, depending upon the roadway. The surface grinding and overlay then is around twenty to thirty-five dollars per square yard. That's gonna vary, again, depending upon the condition of the subbase and the patching and curb that may need to come out and be replaced. Then you can see that prices do jump, uh, as you get into full depth reclamation. You're on forty to fifty dollars per square yard, and then a full roadway reconstruction is a hundred forty-five to two hundred and forty dollars per square yard. So, I mean, you can really see the, the benefit and the cost savings and, and spending money upfront to maintain the roads, um, seal the cracks, uh, do the grind and the, the mill and the overlays, uh, which would, uh, prevent your, the roadway from getting down to a point where they need a full roadway reconstruction. And so when we added up all the, the prices for, um, just the roadway portion, it comes around, uh, up to around five point nine million. And the average yearly MFT, uh, funding that IDAP provides the village is around a hundred forty-four thousand. Um, so you see there's a big disparity between, uh, the, the needs and what actually is available through MFT funding. And the village also will use MFT funding for all the more general maintenance items as well. So our, uh, our recommendation is to develop a multi-year pavement maintenance plan where you can go, even evaluate all the streets in the town, figure out the conditions of each, locate, uh, the roads that are more severe and critical, and, and fix those, uh, initially. And then, at the same time, you can get, um, a maintenance plan together and, and, and figure out which roads you wanna maintain, whether it be crack sealing or, or milling and, or, and overlaying. Um, you determine methods of funding, uh, any type of multi-year plan. And the village is gonna need to establish a budget ultimately, how much you wanna spend each year to, you know, repair and, and maintain the roads. Like I said, it's, it's a, it's a big investment, but it will pay off, you know, if you can get to the point where you have a multi-year plan where you say, alright, we're gonna, twenty percent of the roads, or, you know, throughout the town, we're gonna grind and mill and overlay, and that's gonna save you from, um, running into severe roadway failures where now you're reconstructing roadways. Any questions?
Got a couple. Uh, aggregate, tell me what's, what is aggregate composed of? Is that just ground up, uh, stone?
Right, it's, uh, around here, it's limestone, uh, CA six is the official, it's, uh, it's ground up limestone, basically. So we'll put that down and, uh, usually it's, on our residential road, it's ten to twelve inches thick. Uh, we'll put down lifts, compact it, then rock solid, and then you'll put your binder over the top of that, your first lift of asphalt.
And then you said a lot of our roads that you looked at did not have that, uh, two percent drain?
Right, so just some of the road, you know, as you drive around, you kind of notice some of them are, are relatively flat, you know? And they, they don't have a nice, a nice crown.
Okay.
So the water just doesn't drain off, you know, as well as it could. So when you grind and overlay, they'll put, uh, that asphalt back and they'll establish, they'll reestablish that two percent crown.
So, um, while I could understand that, that, uh, the roads that are a hundred years old and so forth would... Um, you answer the subdivisions that we have, the newer subdivisions played with in the last twenty years, do they all have that grade in them?
Uh, some of them are relative, I know, like for instance Eagle Fair, that's one of the projects that's on the list. That road never had surface put down.
Right.
So it doesn't even have a wearing surface. And the same thing with Whiting Way and, uh, Industrial Drive. So right now, that binder course actually is the wearing surface.
Well, I knew, I knew about, you know, what you mentioned.
One, one thing I'd like to mention, that two subdivision where it doesn't have the surface course, the existing asphalt is below the edge of the gutter.
Right.
So the water is sitting along both sides of the road. And that is exactly what we're talking about, is getting the water off the road. Well, now it's holding it and you'll see where the edges of the road are gonna be breaking up quicker than the metal. So that's why it is important to get the surface courses on some of these roads so that they don't further deteriorate.
Will that ultimately affect the curves as well, or the gutters?
Eventually, because that subbase underneath is, is getting softened.
So it's actually, okay. I got a couple of questions pertaining to roadway. Um, I had somebody ask me this recently, you know, people on their driveways will do a seal coat of the entire driveway. Is there ever any relevance in doing that, like the, do on some of the township roads where they're doing the tar and chip tech thing on any of the roads? Would you ever improvise with doing something like that as a transitional for some of the, we don't wanna call valleys around here, but some of the lanes?
There, there are some pavements which just last a very long time and you'll actually see the asphalt start to turn a grayish color, it starts to oxidize. If you were to put some kind of a seal coat on that, it would help, to help keep that from drying out further. Because once it starts drying out, it'll actually start to, the aggregate will start coming loose and you'll see gravel along the edge of the road. It would help in a situation like that. We've tried it, a couple of different types of seal coats in different towns, a couple of different processes. We haven't had very good luck with them. It doesn't get thick enough. If there are small cracks, it tends to just roll right into them. And then within a year or two, the cracks are still letting water down in. So we haven't had as much luck with that type of a program. But every once in a while, you come to a road that's just oxidizing and some kind of seal coat probably would be beneficial.
Alright, additionally, would you ever be in a situation where a road is not, have curves and things like that? And would you ever just simply patch the road and lay a new base on top? Not a, well, new base or new taco right on top of that without actually doing any grinding?
Just depends upon the condition of the surface. Because what ends up happening is those cracks will just reflect through into the surface. So for instance, like Industrial Drive, it's still in pretty good shape, you may be able to get away with that. Do some patching and then, but then you get, like over, uh, like for instance, uh, Eagle Fair, you know, a lot of those roadways over there, we just have that binder is...
So the binder fall apart, you're gonna have to repair some of that before you do...
Right, so you get the, and then, you know, you can't replace, you can't patch the whole entire, you know, all the roadways within the subdivision. So you've got a lot of the, the cracking, uh, in that binder and so, um...
So like when they're doing the interstate, sometimes you'll see where they'll put some sort of a fabric or something like that to isolate the layers, or sometimes they'll do concrete, asphalt, concrete, whatever layers and things. You don't ever do that on the interstate streets?
You can put a type of fabric, once you come through and you grind your road down, you can put leveling biter on. And you can, can't put fabric over the top of that.
Um, does that extend the...
It's supposed to help with reflect, the, the reflection of the cracks coming through. That was, uh, years ago, there was a lot of that being done and towns are kind of backing off of that.
Is that sort of like the idea of putting fiber mesh in your concrete?
Um, nah, this is more of a, you know, reflecting and keeping that water, that water out is the, is the fabric. But if it's not put down properly, um, it's more, and, and we kind of started seeing that. You know, and you're talking to different people, um, if it's not put down properly, it's more, it does more harm than good.
One thing about that fabric is we usually put a thicker lift of surface course over the top of it because if you don't have enough asphalt over it, especially at intersections where you have a lot of turning movements, sometimes that top layer of asphalt will slide on it. And for that reason, we don't try to put it in areas where you have a lot of truck or a lot of turning heavy vehicles because it, it can't actually slide, it'll, it'll create a slip plane. But in instances where you have straight stretches or it's mostly vehicle traffic, it, it can help keep those cracks and extend your pavement life.
I just had a question too, I think Co-Land did the exact same thing you were just talking about too. Some of these roads in here are obviously residential and some of them are obviously more industrial, have a lot more truck traffic. We're talking about the layers of the aggregate and then the binding and then the surface. The two inch surface would be deeper on an industrial than a residential, or how do you grade that? Is it the, the amount of...
The, the, the surface, it, it can be, a lot of times, um, you're gonna have thicker aggregate section and a thicker binder section. Sometimes you'll even have a third layer of asphalt in there on some of the more heavy duty, uh, truck routes.
So like with that, when the, like in the FDR lines in here, that, that would have the thicker aggregates and the layers then rather than just the, the residential streets resurfacing?
The, the FDR actually provides a lot stronger, instead of just a regular aggregate base, it actually provides more, it actually has some strength to it, it's a little bit of a cementis type base at that point. So, uh, for example, you know, the, the company that did the project in Mantino was showing us, they had a hall road out of Quarry, and they did this, they put down one layer of asphalt and after five years, there hadn't been any potholes in it. So that cementis base in some of those locations will actually replace, uh, maybe a thicker asphalt section. But in answer to your question, typically the new residential subdivision will have maybe a four inches of asphalt. Industrial sections might have nine or ten inches of asphalt. So there is that, as Jeff mentioned, that third layer of asphalt that we use to provide extra strength.
Well, I think the question that Christie Gonzalez has is on your proposal here, for example, on number four, rank four, Bridge on Bones Road to County County jurisdiction. Does that have additional structure in that in your, in your estimate here? Or is that just the standard four inch?
That is the FDR, which actually is gonna give you a, a, a strong, uh, subbase because you got that cement material that's getting mixed in.
But there's really nothing extra in there.
There's, uh, so the estimate figured, uh, two and a quarter inches of, uh, binder, I believe, on top of, of that, that there would be an inch and a half in surface.
But that's also not a truck route from that point, so correct?
Well, and that's, was my question too, because, you know, I lived down, uh, on the, all the north end of where Will Central was. Seven years we waited for that thing to get paved and it, it was taking life, you're, you're life in your own hands trying to drive that. And I remember, I was in school board at the time, trying to get that village to agree, is it gonna be residential grade or is it gonna be truck route grade, um, to see if it's gonna even hold up? If, you know, trucks or school buses were gonna even be able to drive it in a couple of years. So that's what's...
So, so one of the things before, you know, we'd actually go and, and do a design and put a maintenance program together is we'd get pavement course to figure out what actually is out there right now. But like I said, some of the roads, you know, just as we were looking at them, don't have a lot of asphalt and, you know, some have a little bit more. So you only know until you can do those courses.
Cause right now we have no village ordinance to say how deep or how thick the asphalt is supposed to be in each of the subdivisions when they lay them on the streets?
It's, it, there is some in there.
There is some.
As far as for, for new, new roadways.
But that's just for new roadways?
But there again, it's up to the developer to prepare them to the standards if they don't bail on us.
Well, and that's what, you know, if it's different in each of the subdivisions, obviously some of the developers didn't either.
I, I, I'm not sure, DJ, I know you've been around, uh, but I believe one of the problems we had, like, we had the Highlands, the Country Meadows, went in about the same era approximately.
The Phase One, yeah.
And as a result of those roads going in, there's been very little maintenance on behalf of the village to maintain them since they were put in. We got away with having nice roads, relatively nice roads for a long time without having to do a head off to them. Now you look at the road right in front of Bill's, or right next to Bill's house. Uh, I know you want a new road, at least that one was stretched by the stop sign. I know you want a new road, at least that one was stretched by the stop sign. But there's, there's some situations there where it's going, I mean, it's, the, the surface itself is crumbling. So, that's because we didn't have a strategic plan. I think you get, I, I saw another town that had, they actually, the public likes to know this, that they actually had a listing of all the projects that are pending. So people know, it's like, my road's in bad shape, but I know at least in three years, this is on the schedule to get things done. So, that, that, I, I think that...
Right, that's really like a multi-year maintenance.
And then you can actually tell people, this is when that street's getting done, this is when that street's getting done, at least we can answer that. Because right now, people just wanna share the frustrations that we feel, and that's, that's a good way to let them know.
But, and that's why we wanted to see the cost differences here, you know, those kind of things were met, then people can see the difference. And some of these are pretty costly and some of them not so much.
So you're, you're doing an analysis from an engineer's perspective of a core, you do core samples, a couple inches or something like that?
Right, now if you can go all the way down past the aggregate, you know, the subbase too.
So you find out how much black dirt was underneath there instead of clay or something?
Right.
How much aggregate is in, and that's all part of the process before you actually make final recommendations, is, you determine what, what's out there.
And if I understand correctly, streets like, say, Egyptian Trail that doesn't have curb, has a tendency to, to break off on the edges over time if it's not maintained well?
Right, it can if it's not a good solid aggregate shoulder that holds things in place. Also too, like you said, you know, if, if water is, you know, one of the biggest...
Biggest culprit.
Right, a, a roadway's failing, so to say, I mean, i- if you don't have, if you don't have that nice crown, you know, if you don't have, you know, you'll get sandy water in the middle of your streets, you know, it'll start to deteriorate. Along the edges, if you don't have good ditches, it's gonna start to deteriorate, or if your curbs aren't. Sometimes the frost will heat the curbs up, and you got low spots in your curbs, and they'll start to, just like in the subdivisions where there's no surface, same thing. At all the inlets, a lot of time you'll see deterioration, because the water can't jump the curbs to get into those inlets, and it just sits on the pavement.
Anyone else have questions about the roads themselves?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I, I do see a one note, and it's a biggie, you know, number one about the cost opinions preliminary compared without the benefit of pavement core. Because the industrial road, you talk about, the weight it has to carry, that would have to be done, and it could be a lot more inclusive of what you would have to do to that road. I look at it as your, your worst scenario, that you may have to tear that whole thing up and...
Well, right now, that road is actually in relatively decent shape for not having the surface down. So, I would think that maybe it was designed properly and constructed...
So with the truck traffic that's on there, that's best way you're saying what you're saying.
Right, there's no way of knowing until you do...
But once you, you're talking about industrial grade, once we ultimately extend that through to Cleveland, the amount of traffic, we need to make sure you have that, you know. If I, if anyone else has questions about the road, I, I've got a question about the water.
Okay.
Are we okay at this point?
Just question, ranking is your prioritizing, if that is?
Yeah, it's kind of based upon that input from the village staff.
Yeah, it's the surpassed prices. And then secondly, we, at some point in time, we would identify which one of these are TIF eligible?
Uh, TIF, MFT, or TIF, I'm sorry, yes, TIF eligible and, uh...
And bond?
Correct.
And bond, right, okay.
Tiff, bond, and...
I do have a question. On, on the roads, I do have a question on Country Meadows, that many of the streets there are flat, and they have flooding problems. And from what you've estimated here with the new, with the gutters, will that, you think, alleviate the problem? They get flooding at the west end pretty bad.
Country Meadows, that's just off of...
No, that's over here by the, the office there. You're talking about Country Meadows?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the, uh...
Highlands?
The Highlands.
Yeah, the Highlands.
The Highlands, those streets are flat, and the water tends to really erode the street badly.
Like in front of...
It runs west and floods that area pretty bad. Roosevelt and...
Yeah, the older part of the neighborhood, yeah.
That's, that's honestly...
I see that, I'm saying...
Between, between Paulaski and Egyptian Trail?
Yeah, it's, exactly, yeah. That will correct the problem.
Well, it will help, we have to, that one, we do need to find a, a permanent or a, a good storm sewer outlet. And that's one of the things, you know, work with the Egyptian Trail and C, and, and try to work together and, and come up with a good... Because right now, all that storm water, a lot of that storm water goes to a ten or twelve inch cover through the houses. And with not a lot of cover on it, so that's something that we need to investigate a little further.
Any more road? Okay, I got a question for you regarding, I didn't hear a whole lot on storm water management itself through this presentation. We have some of our subdivisions, the Highlands, Country Meadows, again, I don't know if it's just because of how we were, or we're not managing those developments when they went in. But, um, we have situations where some people's backyards end up turning into lakes, because people have recontoured their backyard to suit their needs. We haven't supervised that well from the municipal administration on all those issues. Somebody puts a shed in, it blocks the water flow through those backyards, which are intended to carry water. Country Meadows has similar issues. I, I don't know about the other subdivisions per se, but I've heard those two specifically have a lot of concern and complaints. So, do we need to, while we're dealing with the potential of any bonding or anything else, contend with that issue as well? Because it is decreasing, it's increasing frustration, as decreasing the property value to these homeowners. The roads are important, no question about it. You don't want people getting out of their, their car over in Eagle Fair and standing in two inches of water, because they can't get to the, to the storm catch. But in the same regard, people that have lakes in their backyard and flooding because of all those issues, is there some way we can also address that, or should we be?
If we could, that's gonna be part of the GIS presentation.
Okay.
So, so it is worth doing.
I, I just didn't see here, so I didn't...
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, yes. And then, one, one more question I have is pertaining, you were talking about a second water tower, that we know we're gonna need another large capacity water tower. Is it matter physically, geographically, I should say, where it's located on the map, so to speak? Or does it matter if it's one end of the, of the, of the area or another end? Or could it be, say, somewhere down on Cleveland or, or Industrial or something like that?
We really didn't specify where, um, you know, in the, in the presentation. You know, there's the, the park site that Butterick is, at Bramble Winter Stadium, you know, that may, you know, it may be a possible location to add it. You know, so we weren't, we just knew that there was a, a need, and so we just included it in.
But it wouldn't matter if it was all the way to the east end of our town right now or anything else, you're still providing the load balancing of the other towers that we have?
Yeah, I mean...
I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, part of it, you know, you, you look at your, where your pressures are leased in town, you also don't wanna put it, we have one water system in our area that likes to put the water towers at the low spots, so they have to build them taller, so that's something else to consider, you know, the high ground. You wanna put them near the high ground, but, you know, you do wanna spread them out a little bit. You know, maybe you, if you have one on the east side or the west side, you know, other side of the interstate, because you, you know, your critical crossings, if you have a problem, depending on how many, you don't wanna lose water pressure on one side of the town.
And potentially, if we're expanding our annexation boundaries, we're not sure how far that'll go, so.
And Mayor Dan to finalize that question, that will be presented during EPA portion, when we get to talking to that, that'll be...
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, just wanted to... Any other questions pertaining to the presentation thus far?
Thank you.
Thank you. Russ was up there.
Testing one, two. Good evening, everyone. My name is Russ Brequist, I'm here at Robinson Engineering, I'm the CEO at Robinson. This is Ed Rudd, he is in charge of our GIS department, and I'll explain a little bit about GIS. We're going to introduce today a very exciting tool that is used to manage all your data, putting everything into a mapping form and linking it. And now that sounds a little bit confusing, but let us get into it a little bit and explain it to you. Ed, you wanna start out?
Yeah, please. So it's, it's really a data storage and retrieval system that uses electronic maps as the user interface primarily. But what we wanna impart to you here is that it's not something that focuses on a single department. It should be something that promotes data sharing between all the departments. So, we talked about parcel management, owner and business data, infrastructure management, which would be the public work then, and then economic development tools. And we're gonna show you a little bit about all of this, actually. So, let's talk just a little bit about some advantages that we, we thought of to mention. It brings order to data and information currently spread out in many places around the department. You can spend more time on critical issues and even planning, rather than searching for the data that you, you need to do. Being proactive is more cost effective than being reactive. So, that means this system can help you be proactive by looking at historical events, and then using that to predict future conditions as well. And we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. Knowledge is power, obviously. Fast retrieval of knowledge is priceless power, so. Information systems like GIS can pay for themselves by stimulating business growth as well. So, DJ wanted me to actually demonstrate what the software looks like in addition to these PowerPoints slides. So I'm gonna, um, get off of this for a minute and just give you a quick demonstration. This is actually a, a project we did for another client. So what we're looking at here is the map interface, like I said. But remember, I said it's a data storage and retrieval system, so it's much more than just a map. Over here in this layers list, you basically need to just click, point and click to turn different things on. So now I, we can look at the aerial photography, for instance. Here's the FEMA floodplain for this particular municipality, it's the blue and the, the red area here. So, um, it, it's able to handle large amounts of data very efficiently, okay? Now, of course, getting around on a map usually requires knowing an address or a street. So we've developed a little tool here, where if you know the PIN number, you can, you can type that in, or you can put the complete address in. I'm gonna actually pick a street, so it's gonna go in and it's gonna search for all of the properties on a particular street, and then zoom to that location, okay? So, I mean, it can't be much easier than that. So, what I wanted to show you here is, once you're here, you can click on these objects and actually bring up the information. Hidden over here, so, um, here's the parcel information, and you can, you can dig down all the way to the assessor's information, which is what we're looking at right here. You know, this is directly from the assessor's department. So every parcel has got a lot of data linked to it. You can also link images and documents as well. Once you're zoomed in, maybe you wanna turn on some of the utilities, this is DJ's aerial concern here. So, you can turn the water system on, you know, just by a click of a button, and, um, let me un-highlight these parcels. And you can see the valves, the red things are the hydrants and the water main, and, and so on and so forth, with all these different layers. Here's tree, okay, sign. All this stuff was picked up for this client, and then we do the heavy lifting and deliver it in a project like this, so it's, it's basically point and click. So I think that's, any questions on what you're looking at here on the screen?
How is the data contracted?
You know, there's different ways of doing it, but generally it's done with GPS equipment, where you go out into the field. And, like, the utility data generally is GPS located, because the county data and state data that you can get for free, they don't care about your utilities. But they do have parcels, aerials, and things like that.
And what about like pavement conditions, that's all like GPS and driving it?
Yeah.
And then grading it?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that, and why don't we lead right into that, because that's the next topic, so, thank you very much. So, what else can we use this for? And, and I wanna show you what the village could use this for. Here's, to answer your question, pavement management. The way you have done your pavement management in the past is ride the streets, look at them, put them on a map. And that's the way everybody has done it. But there's a more technical way that links it with to this GIS. And this vehicle over here will drive every street, it's got lasers, it's got cameras around it, and it knows its GPS location. So it'll identify every crack, every settlement, every pothole, then the data is implemented and put on the map. It's given a conditioning index. And so that's about what you've done so far. But the beauty of this is in the software, it then predicts what the road condition will do over time. And as, as the Tyson guys talked about the cost, what you always wanna do is maintain the roads so they get to a point where they never fall into the reconstruction. Costs four times as much to fix a street for reconstruction, you looked at those numbers, than to resurface them. The beauty of this model is prediction of when it's gonna happen, as well as developing a long-term plan. So Ed, you wanna click that?
Yeah, what I'm gonna show next is there's a, there's an option where you can actually drive your streets from your desktop, is what, what we call it. And we've got a little sample here, so you'll notice they're gonna select an area over here on this, on the screen, and different...
So if you watch this, here's the vehicle driving, these are the cameras looking out the windows. You can put eight cameras on, front, back, sides. You can see the houses, you can see the conditions of the roads, you can even read the addresses. So there's a lot of applications that you, you could use, and this is almost just like a little sideline to what the pavement program does.
Now, one thing that DJ got really interested in when we informed him of this, is that any above-ground object that you can see in these frames, you can actually extract that as a point. So for instance, instead of going out and sending a crew out to GPS a tree or a hydrant, you could actually extract it from the video, so it's an added benefit.
So we then would be able to have this GIS mapping after, we would own this data?
You would own the data. In fact, we've even talked about, how do we train your people to go out with the handhelds and either locate things that didn't get picked up, or just use the data that you have? So this is the information that I talked about before. So, every one of the streets is put into a little spreadsheet, and it gives you the condition, and it gives you a number of ratings, goes into a program. And what we do then is develop a paving budget, and we look at, look at different models. How much would we need to spend in order to keep our streets above a condition where they don't fall into that reconstruction? We kinda look at it like a long-term plan. This is a three or a five-year plan, so we're not looking at the roadways every year and saying, okay, what are we gonna do this year? We're looking at how much we need to spend over the next five years to maintain the conditions of the roads.
Okay, one of the more important maintenance items, of course, is water main breaks. Now, DJ is currently tracking water main breaks. He's doing it, you know, in a fashion on paper. So, it's, I would say that this system here, you can see they're depicted on the map as these, uh, these Xs and the circles. It picks the location, the cause, and the date out in the field, okay? So, this is a much more permanent historical documentation of what's going on. I mean, a paper object obviously can be destroyed quite easily, so this is a preferred method of documenting water main breaks.
So how, how would DJ do that? He'd take that little handheld GPS while he's got a water main break, hit the button, it downloads it to the map, and more data goes on there. So what does that do? Let's say we're gonna pave this street, and we look and say, wait a minute, we've got seven water main breaks in the last couple of years. We could go ask DJ, but what happens when he leaves? This is creating historical data all on one map.
We got some text down there at the bottom related to the water system. DJ was mentioning that last year, that the winter was so bad, and there was so much snow out there, that he had to spend countless hours looking for bee boxes and service valves. And he said if, if it had been GPS located and in the system, he could have saved a lot of hours and potentially paid for a substantial part of the GIS. All right, so infiltration and inflow basically is an inspection of the sanitary system. And this is the beautiful way of, of actually, again, documenting what's going on. Here's a manhole inspection with the recommended repairs as labels, and now we're gonna look at how... And now, we're going to look at house-to-house inspections. The gray parcels are houses that were inspected, and then all this, the reporting of what was found out in the field is permanently in a database, and you can print out the reports. And what we're looking at on the right here is the smoke testing that came up out of the ground, proving that there was some kind of an illegal connection in the system. So, there's no arguing with it, really.
And so, all of this is linked. So, you could sit here and click on a house, it'll bring up all this data and let you know what the condition of the sewer is. Better than that, it helps you plan, how much money are you going to spend every year to fix these? And as you probably know, you are paying for all of your sewage in a meter that leaves the village. All of these, and this is a good example, this is a window well that's been connected illegally to the sewer system, not unusual, you're paying for that. So, if we can get in there and fix those using this method and a long-term budget, it's going to save you money in the long run.
Let me interject just for a second here. DJ, do you remember the last time we did smoke test? I mean, it was before any of us were around.
Yeah, it's been, I believe, all over ten.
Smoke testing is very inexpensive and tells you so much that it's probably the best investment you could make as far as a sewer system.
We've gone off and was at the... We figured we would show this because this is something that our water department did for you guys. You might have seen this exhibit before, but they said it would be a good to mention that the cost for this project was lower because they utilized the GIS department within our same organization to develop the map and a lot of the quantities involved in this flow basin exhibit. Okay, so, you're probably aware of the Federal Highway Administration's mandate for sign inventory and reflectivity inspection. It's been out there a while.
DJ's doing it on a yearly basis, unfortunately. He has to do it.
And so, this is the perfect way of doing this. What you do is you can locate these, again, whether you go out there with the handheld GPS or whether you use that video to locate it. But now, you've got it on an electronic map, symbolized as to what it is in the real world, and all of the inspection information is available just by clicking on that object. So, yeah.
Right now, what DJ's doing is going out with a map with paper and pen, writing them all down, sending them in, going back next year. If he had it here, we wouldn't have to do it again.
So, would this also track the relevance of ordinances that were implemented specifying certain sign provisions?
Yeah, absolutely. The nice thing about every one of these signs is you can link so many things to it. You could link the ordinance to it. So, if you were to click on this house, this sign, the ordinance would pop up. If this was a new subdivision, you clicked on it, the new subdivision documents would show up, the minutes of the meetings would show up.
So, special use experience or something like that?
Special use, absolutely. Right now, you, like many villages, where did we put that one document? Where's that other one? This brings it all together.
So, I'm sorry, the picture there, will that identify whether it meets the reflectivity requirements?
Yes, there's a spot there that you actually have to do the, you have to do the test with a unit, a gun called a retro reflectivity gun, and then you put the data into the system. And then you can print out the map of the ones that failed, basically. You can change the way the map looks based on the data that it's linked to. Okay, so, a storm sewer atlas, you guys were discussing earlier some problems with storm sewer, is something that you guys need because it doesn't exist right now. So, that's one of the things that we could help you with. But here's some samples of GIS-based storm atlases. The left side shows storm, pipes, creeks, ditches, ponds, without an aerial. And then the one on the right shows it with an aerial photography in the background. And you know, the NPDES from the EPA mandate requires inspections of outfalls and things like this. So, we've set these up for clients where they can go out to the field with a small device, and they take pictures and enter information, and then we can print out these reports. And the same for construction erosion sites.
I think like Ed said, it's one thing to know, though, you do not even have a storm sewer atlas yet, and that's something that you badly need.
So, Mayor, to answer your question about the storm problem, before we can address the storm problem, we have to know where our existing storm is. And we don't have a map. We have a water map, sanitary map, but we don't have a storm sewer map. So, to get the storm sewer implemented, get it onto the GIS, where it goes, where it flows, ditch drain, you know, gutter drain.
Potential capacity.
Yes, what's there lying. Once we get that on the map and get that information plugged in, then we can assess how to fix it to add to that storm.
One of the questions that I'm ultimately going to get to, and I'll say it, and you don't have to answer it yet, if you're prepared to, I guess, but is what penalties or consequences have you found, in our case in our village or other villages that you've worked with, perhaps, where not tracking, say, sign compliance or INI or different things like that? Is there a real cost to us, penalties? Or I know INI we pay for with Aqua if we're not managing it well.
Right.
But it'd be nice to have some way to quantify the potential risk that we run.
No, I know a little bit, but I don't know all the details of that. But I do know that, I heard that bond ratings could be affected if you don't go along with some of these mandates.
Okay.
As well as, of course, the liability of accidents themselves is huge.
I'm not advocating not doing it.
No, I know, I'm just saying, those are some of the things. So, bond ratings and just your liability, you know?
And there are fines associated with the number of these things, outfalls as well. So, we talked about paving, we talked about sanitary storm and water main. Also developed a little module as part of this, resident concerns and work management. And so, this is something where residents could get online on your website. And there's a host of dropdown information that they could just click on. Say that I, here's my address, and there's a street light out, and I click on that. And so, now it gets, you know, filled out by them, here's where I live, et cetera, and it gets sent off. They press a button, it says, "Thanks for your information, here's your tracking order." And so, now DJ gets it, or whoever we decide amongst us who gets it, and then it says the status of it is planned. And then it gets back to the people after you've acted upon it and tells you it's been fixed, or here's the situation. The next step of it is, and DJ has a report that all of you can see. Ed, do you want to switch that report? Where we track it on a weekly or a monthly basis and put a total summary of all the different events like this. So, it's been nice to have this at a meeting. Hey, we had all these conditions. The residents are happy because they know what's going on, they've got an answer right away. They're interacting with you. People that don't have a computer certainly can call, and you can plug this in. But a nice tool to know what's going on in the village, and we can tie this into a lot of different things. So, it could be these complaints, it could be a lot of other things, building permit concerns, all kinds of other things. So, just one example of it.
So, when you're talking about, I'm sorry, but when you're talking about building permit concerns, I'm excited about the potential of some of this, but so, is it possible then our police department would have access to review the... We got a building services code enforcement that operates basically our regular work hours. If there was something going on after hours, the police could identify it. There's a work in progress at whatever else, where they could actually see what authorized permits are for particular parcels. They drive by and say, "Hey, there's not a permit for this construction," or if it's...
Very astute, we have a whole fly...
Two steps ahead of us, Mayor, but yes, and we're going to show you how this interacts with iPhones and iPads that the police could have or that all of you could have, or that. So, thanks, we'll get to that in just a little bit. So, property management, which kind of takes us into that, building permits violations, ordinances, and zoning. Mayor's right, it was right on the next slide, you know? Ordinances, so we would create a zoning map. And as things change, this would be so interactive that if there was a building permit issue, that would show up if we were to click on an address. Here's the certificate of compliance, a picture of the house, you get the pictures of the inside, pictures of the deck. Any ordinances that were changed in your zoning map are linked directly to it. So, when we say, "Where'd that ordinance go?", what we're going to do is click on it, you know? How did this become, you know, a commercial? Click on it, it'll show you the information. Again, it's taking all that data and putting it in one spot.
I have a real-world story that happened just a few months ago. So, one of our clients was doing some TIF research and things like that, and they came to us, and they asked us, "Well, do you know what our exact limits are?" And I'm like, "No, we don't have..." Unless it's given to us, we don't have all of the annexations and all of the de-annexations, okay? So, now they have to hire a lawyer, and I'm talking, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars to investigate the annexations and all this and go do all the analysis. You know, if they had done this, this is showing zoning, but you could also do annexations and de-annexations stored in the system.
Provided we have the historical information available.
Yeah, or start from a certain point.
And if you don't, as you start forward, you won't have to look back five years from now. So, everybody has that same problem, the municipalities. It's a question of when do you start fixing the problem?
Okay, here's an example related to property management. So, you know, a lot of times if there's a zoning variance or something like this, or even if you just want to notify somebody of a street being repaired or some kind of a project, the GIS actually lets you pick a point on the map and then selects everything within a, whatever the buffer distance is you want. In this case, it's 250 feet. And then, within just another click, you can send off these mailing labels and form letters. So, instead of doing this all by hand, it's done in a few minutes, basically.
So, think of the power of this. Let's say this block was getting the resurfacing, and we highlight that, we go back, we have every person's name. Think of the power of sending a letter, "Hey, Mr. or Mrs. Smith," it would put their names on it. Street will be resurfaced, going to cause a little bit of problems, but it'll be much better. Communication, you'd be communicating with just about anybody you wanted. Something was going on in this intersection, click on those four, prepare letters for them, mail it out. You're interacting with the residents a lot more with that. So, this is another economic development tool, and I know that economic development is tops on your mind. So, the GIS map allows, let's use an example of a developer's coming into town, and he's looking for a site. We've developed a module that he could either put in a PIN number if he's looking and knows what the PIN number is, puts an address in, or let's say he doesn't know any of that, but he's looking in town and says, "I'm looking for something that's a TIF zone, it's out of the 100-year flood, I want it a mile from the railroad, I want it, you know, three blocks from the expressway." Clicks on that on the map, and this could be tied to your web, or he could come in. And what it then does is goes through the entire database, and we say, "Show me something two and a half miles around that site." We found the site. What's the demographics of that? What's that look like? Click on another button after we said two and a half miles, it's driven, drawn a circle around what we're looking at, and now it starts doing, producing demographic data. There's a host of these documents that are tied to this thing, 10 or 15 of them. Talks about housing values, financing, occupation, how many people live there, what are the ages of the people. Information's power. That's what the people that are coming into communities that want to build look for. And if you had it, and the town actually didn't, this is the stuff they want to see.
The people that we designed this for, it was actually accounting. Like Ross said, while they're on the phone, they could be typing in the parameters, now they're already emailing the guy the information about the property and the demographics in the area as they're on the phone.
And what do you have to do now? Hey, where's the sewer? Where's the water? DJ's got to go through the maps. What's this stuff? "I don't know if I have that," he's saying. "What's the zoning? Let me go look." With a couple pushes of a button, you'd have all that information. Okay, so, what does it do for economic development and planning with the expansion analysis? And this map should look familiar, it's the big map you had. But the map is so interactive, you've got one paper copy hanging on the wall, but we theoretically could click on almost any site, and it would give us who the owner is if we want. Is this something you're negotiating for annexation? What is our connection to the other annexation people? It's all interactive, not just a big piece of paper hanging on the wall. Zoom in and show so many different things than the wall copy can do.
All right, we even got the IDA roadway, proposed roadway into the new airport.
And so, it's interactive that we could show the traffic counts at every one of those intersections, if that's important to you, where the closest sewer and water is. This is how we get developers to come into town. So, we also developed this future planning, and let's hope that we have a situation where we've got a big site, we want to see what this looks like. This just happens to be Toyota Park and Bridge, we worked on that with them. And we do 2D modeling, but we also did 3D modeling. Mayor said, "I'm trying to explain to everybody what this is going to look like when it's done." So, Ed clicked that video. So, we developed a 3D model, so people, the residents, can see what it really looks like. And so, that's taking that model. We put a bus shelter there.
That's actually a vacant parking lot.
Yeah, this was all a vacant parking lot. And now, this is under construction, that's there, these are planned.
We got a hotel coming around the corner.
Hotels are coming, and so, but you know, the funny thing was, we even looked at, look at all the, there's three different water towers here, so we put them there to see what it looked like. So, we can simulate not only what it looks like, but will there be any effect by the sun of the people sitting in the stands? And it's so detailed, you can read the street signs. So, just one...
Well, I could say I've been in that parking lot, it's a well-designed parking lot.
It's really cool, isn't it? So, here's 2D, and that's 3D. So, just give you an idea of some of the capabilities. This is one of the things that I really like to talk about is what's your vision? And so, I took the liberty of putting all your good-looking pictures up there, but I've helped a number of communities set their vision or set a master plan. And this isn't Moni, but I just pulled it from elsewhere. And what it does is shows where do you guys want to go in the next five years? And from that, we outline things like, "We want to do a reconstruction here, we want to do a roundabout here." I know that's important to you. These are our TIF districts, and we're going to develop it this way or that way. Blowing up the other side here, we've set up goals for the community on safe water, safety, economic development, infrastructure, and put costs on it and put an approximate date. And what this is, is us sitting down as a group saying, "All right, what's important to you? Let's put it on the map. Can we find funding for it? Are there grants available? We don't have it on a map, we'll never get there." But this doesn't mean this is going to happen, but these are your vision ideas. So, I'd love to help you with that kind of thing.
Okay, everybody seems to love iPads and Galaxy tablets and smartphones, okay? It's really become a thing in mapping, that's blowing the whole thing...
Almost everybody, right?
Almost everybody.
It's like a rubbery phone at all.
So, this is an iPad simulation, obviously. And so, once the GIS system, the layers are developed, this can be very cost-effectively be put up into what we're calling the cloud and then available from the iPad and the iPhone. So, we're looking at here, the layer from the left, it looks a little different than your desktop, but of course, you know, you've got a smaller real estate to work with here. And I've clicked on a parcel, and that's the information of the parcel on the right.
Here's the parcel, here's the data from it, and here are all the layers that we can turn on. We can turn the water on, we can turn on the sewer, we can turn on zoning, all those other things. Or you can turn it on from all of your iPads as you're driving along the street.
And of course, you know, if you press this button, basically, it'll follow you around, and you'll be in the right location no matter where you're at, so. Additionally, this can be set up to actually enter data as well. So, here's a method of putting resident concerns or even staff concerns. So, you pick the general category here, and then you start entering the information, and it puts a symbol based on this on here. As soon as that thing is entered, people back in the office can see it, or other people in the field can see that location.
So, when you're talking about somebody registering a complaint about a light being out or something like that, they could actually get in there, the resident can send it with a smartphone, it'll pick the GPS coordinates from the phone.
Right, that's right.
And get an approximate idea of the location.
Right.
And Mayor, to your point about permits and police, I mean, the police could have these iPads too, and as you say, somebody sees something going on, "Hey, this guy have a permit." Have a little note on there, and then it'll go back to the department. Next morning, you can look at it.
So, once you're starting to accumulate these concerns, there's another app... So, once you're starting to accumulate these concerns, there's another app called a dashboard, which administrators and managers could use, which says how many of each issue are in the graph here, and then a list of the issues here you can click on and get the information, but shows you everything that's happening. And you can set the filter for like 24 hours, you know, a week, a month, whatever you want to see on the map. But the data always stays in the system, but you can filter it down to time periods.
And it's not limited to just this. You can put crime statistics, you can put almost anything you want. Lock parties, whatever's happening in the community could be there. So, think bigger.
Lock party. So, you're talking about potentially different levels of security to have access to those?
Absolutely. There's security levels that you say, "I only want this person to have or that person," or "I want all the residents to have this." We can have different levels of security for every one of these apps.
Now, I know it's long to DJ a while back, but I guess like, some of the utilities won't make public knowledge where their things are, so are water mains, stuff like that, because of all the home line security and all that stuff. Will they share any of that data with the village itself, or they won't? Like Comma and NICOR, they typically won't share that with us either?
We've worked with them a number of times, saying, "That'd be great if we can get ahold of it." They won't share it, just like they're concerned about the water system.
Okay.
And kind of closing this out a little bit, crime analysis, I talked about emergency management. Let's assume, we just picked this, you want to do some surveillance on a truck stop, for example. We can tie all the cameras in to this GIS system, and then different people like the chief and others could be watching that. We could be monitoring a whole lot of things, you know, it's whatever your imagination can think of. Plate readers, you're probably familiar, or maybe you are. Plate readers will read the plates, and we can monitor who's coming into that truck stop, and is there any kind of suspicious activity? We can link it back to the police people, and they could be getting that data if they're not already. And I don't know, they might be doing that already, but the point of this example is we can tie it into even crime analysis.
Well, Mayor, what you were talking about was they do other things, like code violations that they notice, right?
So, that would pop up on this screen here, and they'd be just touching it if there's a code violation or whatever it is. Don't even need to write it down. Snap it, go back to the map.
Now, and I'm not advocating for, I know sometimes they track where their squad cars are at all times, how fast they're going, and all that, so I'm not, you know, making a point on that, but to be right with you, identify a certain pattern of our own vehicles or, you know, municipal vehicles, all that, making certain patterns where you're not zoning, your police, your public works, your different resources like that effectively. You can, is that something where you can have an overlay of, or is that a whole different?
No, no, we've done that, and I'm glad you asked that, because we didn't show it here, but snowplows is a good one, right? Could you just imagine Mrs. Smith calling you and saying, "Where's that snowplow?" And you say, "Mrs. Smith, if you look out your right door there, it'll be coming there in about two seconds, because we'd be able to monitor that." We could even give the people the access to monitor that if you want.
The city of Chicago's doing that, I think.
The city of Chicago's doing it. We did it eight years ago, probably. So, yeah, you can do all that. You could track just about anything you want. Garbage trucks is another one that was, it was talked about.
So, going back to previous example, I just want to play a little game here, because I like to do that. We talked earlier about some of the projects, and let's see, we're having a meeting here, we're talking about rank number 13, Pauline Road, and I've got my fancy little tablet here, I'll show you how it works later.
Good one.
Would we have the ability, if every trustee had that, they could actually pick that up right there and see where it is?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's the level of detail you want to show.
Right. And we could, as we go through our agenda, we could say, "Okay, we want to see where this is in town."
Yes, for the audience.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, but then we got to see you.
And eventually, now you're getting all your ordinances and your minutes and everything on the iPads, because all of you are using it except for one, and...
Well, David just to be our P&amp;Z chair, but it just brings up an interesting point, is that, you know, a lot of times, you know, ideally, the board, the P&amp;Z commission would actually go out and site, inspect before, special use or variance or whatever else is issued, so they're familiar with, they've taken a firsthand look at a situation. Even after they have, doesn't mean they fully understand what they're looking at on a piece of paper sometimes. It'd be useful to be able to have where even at a meeting, that presentation could be facilitated by showing them and answering all those questions as a group at that point as well.
Or if a citizen comes up and says, "I'd like to talk about my property," we can sit here, look at it.
Yes, and actually...
So, there's a house being built next door to that, someone says, "What's that gonna look like?" The plans for the house could even be loaded into that, so you tap on that, now you're looking at the plans.
But you know what I forgot to mention was, that the residents, if they have a concern, they can also attach the image of a photo they took of the concern to that point on the map, because you could look at the photo from your desk.
All right, real quick, going to P&amp;Z real quick if I can. We've had this happen, and it's been brought to our attention over the course of time, that somebody will come in, they'll turn in their green cards for the certified mail to their 150-foot, what do you call it? Radius of all portions of their property for a special use or something like that. Oftentimes, unless staff's interpreting or helping the commissions or whatever else, we don't even know necessarily that 150 feet was obvious. We had a situation at, I think, at the last P&amp;Z meeting, where half the houses, it should have been contacted more. And that being the case, is there a provision, is there a provision to put in an address like you did earlier and have it identify 150 foot? It'd actually list all the properties.
Yeah, it picks every one, if it touches just the edge of a property, it lists it. And so...
It's distracting, just taking...
You want to go back to that?
No.
Yes, you can, the answer is yes.
And a resident could do that as well, then.
We give anybody access.
If you want to give that access.
Yeah.
If they come in for the special use, you could give them that piece of paper saying, "Here's who you need contacted."
Yeah. And you give them the list of everybody, you could put them all on letters that they can hand out to everybody. So, let me, in closing, how do we get there? How do you get this? So, I put a couple categories. You know, I think it's important that you develop a long-range pavement management plan. You got a good start this year, and you know, that's a good way to get this thing fixed, but look long-term. Look at doing that, maybe the driving of the streets next year after you finish this program, and start developing a long-term plan. How can you fund that? On the right side, through maybe some of the bonds. You could put that into the bond data. Acquire the free county, state, and federal data, and a lot of that aerial data is free. That's what we use. So, you're using what South River Mayor's managers and those other agencies have, they give that to us for free. Grab that, convert the sewer and water atlases to GIS on this information, and develop a new stormster layer. Now, we're working with you on some of the sanitary sewer. They have low-interest loans. Low-interest loans, 20 years, 2.5% interest, 2.9, really a good deal, could pay for a lot of this. Engineering is reimbursable. So, that's how you can fund that.
Is someone's TIF eligible too, depends on...
Getting there, thank you, Mayor.
I always saw two on that slide, sorry.
All right, you're one step ahead of me. Develop the web-based mapping functions, you know, where we'd be working on economic development and internal staff. Most of the economic development falls within the TIF. Those are all eligible. There are some areas out of it, but a good portion of it would fall in the TIF. So, you could use TIF dollars for this. Final thoughts, talked a little bit about it. GIS is an investment. Look at it as a way to save money, not an expense that's gonna cost you money. All village departments would save man-hours, especially starting with public works, there's no doubt DJ would like that. The web-based economic development information opens you up to the world. So, if we're trying to market some properties, instead of putting a sign on and hoping somebody drives by, we put it on the web, we've got the whole world looking at it now. So, for developers, time is money, and I see this happen a lot of times when they come into a town. If they can't find the information quickly, they move on to the next site. This is going to give you that information at a push of a button. Added revenue from new businesses pays for the system and helps you keep building this and providing more information. I think you guys realize you have a great future ahead of you, a lot of things are gonna be happening. You'll need the right tools, though, to help manage the growth. Information is power. GIS is the tool that could help you with that.
So, that's it. So, good presentation.
Any questions, or...
Robinson's GIS, what's different about yours? I mean, there's lots of people out there who offer GIS.
There's very few that offer GIS in this region. Robinson's the leader in this Chicagoland region in GIS. We have most of the data. We've been around for 77 years, we've acquired a lot of the data. We work hand-in-hand with the South River Mayor's managers. In fact, most of the data that they use, they get from us.
And I saw that there was some of that, some of that recognition.
We've got a proven track record, we've been at this for 20 years, some people are jumping on a bandwagon. Before GIS, they even knew what it was, we were in the middle of it, so. Any other questions? Ruben?
Thank you, Russ. Good job. You covered, you answered all the questions I asked for you the other day. Real quickly, before, I've asked Tom Hadden from Baird Brothers to just follow up, covered the bond issues. Delena from Baird Brothers did a presentation before the board a few months ago. But I asked Tom just if he could be here just to follow any questions that you may have in reference to the bond. You could look at the cost analysis that Tyson did, put together, you see, it's 12.9 million dollars roughly with these projects. These projects are not something we're gonna do in the next year, but these are over the next few years. So, but we wanted to give you just an idea of what we're looking at cost-wise and how we can fund this. Breaking this down, and you don't have this in front of you here, but DJ and I did a quick math prior to the meeting, it's roughly $5.1 million that would be needed for a bond to cover. So, roughly $7 million plus would be covered either by TIF or by the EPA loan or MFT funds. That would leave about $5.1 that we would need to have on hand to take care of these other issues. So, with that, I just wanted to throw it out, these are not engraved in stone, obviously there are, with Tyson, you guys brought out, we would have to do some core samples, we would have to do a little bit more evaluating, but these are just kind of a basis numbers to work with for now until we can move further. So, with that, I'm gonna introduce Tom.
I just have one quick question on this 12.9 that's on here, and then 5.1, this is just the roads that we're looking at too, because we were also talking...
It wasn't both, it's not both, just to clarify. 12.9 is the total, he's just saying about 5.1 of the 12.9 you would have to bond for, so.
But my question is, beyond this 12.9 that I was identifying just for road issues, but there's other things that we were talking about putting in a bond issue, a water tower...
That would be an EPA loan, that'll be a different subject when we talk, when we go to the EPA process. And I'll have them come in to give that presentation. We're working on that right now, if you remember, the board had approved my stormwater flu monitoring, because we were checking for our INI. Robinson has kind of taken it to the next step gracefully, and kind of put that mapping on the GIS already. He kind of showed a quick snippet of it, you guys haven't seen it yet, but when we get the EPA loan, as they talked about how I've been identifying main breaks on paper and water tower needs due to development, all these pieces could get put together, put on this GIS tool, and then we'll use that as the presentation on miles or, you know, lengths of water main that need to be replaced, the cost of the tower, the cost of the well, and then some of these other things that would come from an EPA that's in on here, sanitary sewer, water station, stuff like that, because the EPA loan is a lower interest rate loan than the bond is. So, that's why those would come over an EPA loan.
Thank you.
Okay, just the total dollar, so you're saying 12.9, and going to Heidi's point there, aside from the IEPA loans, things of that sort, is a 12.9 inclusive of any stormwater issues or anything else in that regard? No, because that's...
We have to analyze the stormwater, map it first, and then the...
With GIS?
Correct.
Yeah, but ultimately, that may be a separate bond somewhere down the road.
Correct. And this may be, you know, two bonds. It's whatever the board feels, deems they want to take it in our 135 seven-year plan.
And we've had multiple bonds in the past based on progressive needs and so...
Okay. Okay, then, this time I'm gonna introduce Tom Hadden with Baird Brothers.
Good evening. We, I'm here to answer questions, but I do have a little bit of information that Ruben asked me to do some quick math this afternoon. And the question was, or we're talking 5.1 million, if you borrow more or less, since the number isn't finalized yet, what would it cost on a rate basis for tax rate, and then what might that cost a typical homeowner? So, we looked at 3, 4, and 5 million dollars. Let's start with the 5 million, because that's the highest, and that's what appears to be the number we're looking at. That would cost about 40 cents on the tax bill. Per thousand dollars of EAP. Hundred dollars of EAP.
So, if somebody's got a $200,000 home, what's that mean?
Yeah, it's a, we actually did the math of 200,000, and it's $265. If you, if it's your, we did the, we went to the US Census Bureau, and your median home value is 179.8, so let's say 180,000. We rounded down to 175, that's about $230. So, that's the total add to the bill at 40 cents. If it's 4 million, the same numbers are $214 for $190. If it's 3 million, it's $158 for $140, so depending on the value of the home. Obviously, these are very preliminary numbers. We're using today's interest rates, which we estimated at about 3.21%, which is historically low, so depending on where you sell the bonds sell, where the market is at the time you come, could be better or worse than that. It wouldn't be, the interest rate is not going to be a real big decider on, unless it moves up a lot. Your rating is pretty good, you've got a AA3 rating, which is a good rating, and so that helps us sell those bonds at those aggressive interest rates. Obviously, the biggest decider is gonna be the absolute cost, what you, you know, how much you need to borrow.
I've got a question going to the EPA loans, I want to clarify. I know we've talked about this a little bit internally, but we're bonding in this case for possibly $5 million or whatever the board, same theme is relevant to these projects that we're working on. But the EPA loan, if we borrow 2 million, 5 million, whatever it is to do a water tower and other water-related projects, what is the impact on that ultimately? And you may or may not have the answer to that, because you're borrowing money versus lending and bonding, whatever for, you know, to subsidize it. If you have an EPA loan, we've got to have a means by which to pay that back. And are we gonna pay that back again by putting that on the property tax bill as an increased way of dealing with that? Or what would be the mechanism for dealing with that? And I know this may not be your...
Well, it's a policy question, and so you have your options. You could put it on the tax bill, or you could put it on the property, or on the water bill. It's a loan, so it needs to be repaid, and you're the source of the repayment.
Right.
So, the only, the only thing, IEPA loans are very good. They're low-cost, and they're easy to get, and they don't require you to pledge anything, meaning they'll write you, it's almost like a signature loan. So, you've got an obligation to pay them back, but they don't take a security interest in things, and that leaves you a lot of freedom with other things you might need to do where this loan isn't available. The only difficulty, we found the sum of the IEPA loans, water towers, for instance, pipe in the ground, law and live assets, the maximum term you can borrow is 20 years with an IEPA loan. So sometimes, we have one community that borrowed, built a, so it's treatment plant with water with IEPA loan. The development that was projected didn't happen. Suddenly, they were oversized in their utility. And so, in order to be able to afford it with the current customer base, we actually refunded it out of the IEPA loan and extended the term to get the dollar cost, the annual dollar cost down. It likely isn't an issue here. I just like to point that out because sometimes it comes up.
And I think to the mayor's question too, and I think you sort of mentioned it as like a general obligation fund basically, or a loan to the IE, but will our bond rating go down if we take on the IEPA loan as well as the bonding?
You're looking at a lot of debt. Twelve million dollars in money is not an insignificant amount of money. So you will have to be concerned with that. We have it to the point where we've done the analysis. The question will clearly be, if you're planning to pay it out of the utility and your rates end up being okay as a result, so you have to establish new rates to pay for that IEPA loan, that then becomes a self-supporting debt. The rating agencies take that out of your debt calculation. They don't, for your general obligation debt, they don't count it. And so then that goes away. If you plan to put it on the tax bill, it will be inside the debt.
What are the other means of paying it back? If you're not wanting to directly affect the water, the users of the system, and you don't want to put it on the property tax bill, are there any other means by which you pay it down?
Some other special revenues, sales tax, TIF revenues, things like that.
Impact fees from new development is a key one.
So, and again, I'm not trying to use the TIF fund as a go-to for things, but if it's directly benefiting the development within a district, say a water tower is an example, is any of that eligible for?
Yeah, it's a legal question, but can I, I'm not qualified to answer that, but based on my experience, yes, if it's benefiting the district, it ought to be paid.
So theoretically, some of that could be offset in that case. Go ahead, tell the rest of the.
The village of Wilmington built a brand-new water tower for the Michelin new site that's they're building right now. That was paid for in TIF money. They built two million dollars, the bills, the business, Ridgeport Properties, gave the village a check for two million dollars to build a new police station. That came from TIF money. They're talking about if Michelin goes to three point two million square foot there, which they, from what I understand, plan on doing in a couple of years, providing them a new fire station out of that park. That also will come from TIF money. So there are other creative ways to finance some of this stuff. It's not just utility money and it's not just bond money. Based upon, you know, what the village administration might be working on projects that could be partially affected by that. But I like the idea of going back for just a second to the GIS planning because that's where we kind of put it all together and say, okay, here are the projects over the next five years and here's where some of the funding will come from. And these, we don't have funding established yet, but it's also three years down the road, which gives us time to look out and say, okay, what, you know, what are some of the options? But certainly, we got, you know, all of this is infrastructure and we've got to have infrastructure. If residents are talking to us on a regular basis about the roads, well, you have to pay for that. And we have to pay for it. The people in the area have to pay for it.
If I could, just so we have a ballpark range, DJ, do you have an approximate number that you're thinking we're ultimately going to need to borrow for a variety of things for the EPA loan?
We're working on those figures right now. I don't have a solid number. I can't give you a solid number.
Rough ballpark?
We can't give you a solid number.
We have to do the GIS. We've got to get that.
So we're not even close to even worrying about that at this point?
Tom and I, Robinson are working on these finalized numbers. These prioritized based on our needs and requests. We don't have a final number plugged in as of yet. We will get that. Because of the industrial drive study that we did for the water, they changed the elevated tower that we thought we would need at five hundred thousand to a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tower. So those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit. We're also trying to get the water main under, to see how bad it is. So, once we get a lot of this data inputted, we'll have a final number. So I do not have a final number. That's why we are not presenting that at this time.
Do we have, just so that we all have a general direction, do we have any idea? Will we anticipate knowing what those numbers will be for the EPA-related loans in the next few weeks, few months? Or is that something that's?
Right after the holiday, Tom and I.
Okay.
I'm bringing that.
So sometime within the next year at least?
Oh gosh, yeah, wait for it. I'm hoping within the next month, we should have a better grasp on it because we still have to do the presentation for what we found with our findings on the flu monitoring, for the smoke testing that Russ touched upon with, you know, the mapping on the GIS and how he showed that and how they categorized that, found the air, put it all on the GIS. So we have a plan that some of that work in smoke testing and so on and so forth will go to the EPA loan to do that. And then we've already kind of taken some preemptive steps based on when we did the water rate increase with that staggered increase, rate increase every year to kind of help offset knowing that those costs would be coming soon to help pay back EPA loan. We all know we have a fifty thousand gallon water tower. We all knew we needed a new one. So that was put into play when we did the water rate increase, knowing that, you know, we would have to pay back EPA loan. We're currently paying on an EPA loan right now and that was for the building of the five hundred thousand gallon water tower. That will finish it off. Once we get a lot of our meter replacement program done, which was, some of those figures were put in to the EPA loan, the hundred thousand dollars a year that I've been expelling in the water account to do our meter program upgrade would then could be used to pay back the EPA loan because I'm not now replacing meters all the time. So there is some tools already put in play for the future when that EPA loan comes into play to help pay back this loan. We'll get the final numbers hopefully in the next month. I talked to Tom today about that and we've got to tweak a few things and we'll go from there.
Board, questions for Tom in giving the presentation on bonding?
What's the process again? How long? I don't even know the process, but how long?
Yeah. Figure three to four months on a project like this where there's a lot of information to be developed. That's, that would be about right.
Does having GIS implemented in that help that process along?
If it helps, if it helps the people who need to make the decisions on what needs to be constructed and how much it's going to cost, yes, it would speed things up.
And the interest rate that you quoted, that three point two one percent, when was the last, was that today's rate?
That would have been a deal we did yesterday.
Yesterday?
Right.
Because I believe the young lady, it was he or she, had it at like two point eight percent when she was here. So how long?
There was, one of the assumptions I had to make when we went into this was how many years? She was talking about a fifteen-year deal. This is twenty. It would, rates are about the same as it was when she was here. So it would probably be about the same for a fifteen-year deal. But of course, your annual payment would go up.
So we can take it. Okay.
Okay, just to close, I know we've been there all the time. I appreciate all this attention and obviously, this is a very important subject. You know what? Being out and being called on the phone and being yelled at, taken to a residence, looking at standing water in yards, that our homes are at flood level, it really then puts a face to the y'all crying. And what we are hoping to do is to bring a united front here as a village, administration, board, to the residents and bring direction, bring answers, and not just agree with the problem and let it perpetuate and continue to grow. So what I would ask the board to consider is to approve us to move forward with the GIS mapping. And with that, to allow us then to begin a survey and get a state of the, a state of the village, where we're at and what we need to do. Because we only know so far what we know and that's only visual. We don't know what's below the surface and this is a system that's built from below the surface on a. It would be like going out and working and digging ditches without a shovel or doing a job without the proper tools. And we're asking for some help so we can move forward and bring anything. So I would ask the board to consider this, to approve us moving forward with the GIS. And then with that as well, it just at least some direction as far as the bonding goes. This is overwhelming, you know, the numbers are there. We've got an idea of what we need to do and so I would just leave it at that if we can move forward with the GIS mapping.
So, Larry, I assume you're able to give me feedback from back there. So what we're looking for would be a motion from the board to proceed with a GIS mapping plan or implementation?
Implementation of the GIS system.
Okay. So that's point number one. Go ahead.
Somewhere I missed the cost.
Yeah. I'm going to address that. I just want to make sure what the question was first.
I'm ahead of the game now.
I'm not going to move forward without having an idea on that. And before we address the dollar amount, am I to understand that there are portions of this that can come from various aspects of, be it MFT, be it TIF, be it, I don't know, some of those potentially available through the IEPA loan as well?
The bond issue for the roads, the EPA loan to pay for the water, sewer, and sanitary, and the web-based, if that's, if all of those are things you want, can come out of TIF the majority.
For the economic development portion of it as well as the infrastructure within those districts?
Come out of the majority of it. And so if you say, yeah, I'm interested in all of those, we can kind of show the breakdown to you and I respect that you want to see the numbers, but where are they being paid from is just as important.
It is. Because when you're talking about twelve point nine, but ultimately you're only bonding for five point one as an example, that makes it a different, it changes the palatability of that. So, do you have numbers that they presented to you at this point for costing on these, on the GIS?
We have submitted some to DJ before. We've since then done some work already that, you know, will come off of that. With all the respect that if you want me to just kind of put together the fresh numbers, because I think the numbers before will even come down because we did.
The initial, the initial numbers was really like a baby step. It was getting the utility layers built and it wasn't all the stuff we showed you today.
So various phases was what you're talking about?
And you've got to remember, this is a building block. You can do as much or as little as you want based on how much you're going for it.
To make it usable.
I'm looking to the building blocks cost.
Exactly.
And you remember what?
They're going to resubmit it, just so you know.
I understand, but I'd just like to know. You do need to know that.
I'm going to give you the, I have a. And Russ said he's going to resubmit it, but what was submitted to me?
All right, guys, Superticker Zell has some numbers here.
To develop an atlas from field-located GPS locations for the storm sewer, we recorded twenty-eight thousand.
All right, hold on.
Okay.
Twenty-eight thousand for the?
The development atlas for field-located GPS locations for the storm water.
Storm atlas.
Estimated thirty miles of pipe with twelve hundred structures.
Go ahead.
Okay. The next one was the sanitary. That was to develop the atlas from field-located GPS locations. And on the sanitary, they're estimating about five hundred manholes. It's going to be give or take. Put that on the GIS, it is fourteen thousand. Water estimated about thirty-three miles of pipe, four hundred higgs, about four hundred and forty system valves to get moved over to the GIS is thirteen thousand.
Okay.
So in essence, you know, you start adding all those.
Hold on a second. What about the provisions for, say, economic development, some of the other?
We don't have those.
They didn't ask for those before, so.
That wasn't what I was more concerned with.
I do.
These were, those that were done about two years ago when I was working on them. So obviously, we've added to some of the sanitary. That's why Russ is trying to kind of reiterate that maybe some of these costs will go down, but this was the cost about two years ago, so.
So, what they're talking about from my calculation, I'm only going to show this to the mayor, is that much money would represent less than one percent of the cost of the capitalization of twelve point nine. If we, if we took a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, the first number you have was twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, fourteen, thirteen, just those. But if I said, if I said we're looking at a hundred thousand for GIS, which we're not, should be less, substantially.
Well, especially if you're including all the modules and all the provisions and all that.
I think that's a good budget number of the. If you said a hundred thousand, I'm just saying, a hundred thousand is less than one tenth of one percent. It's point zero zero eight percent of the twelve point nine we're talking about spending. And that's my point. And to me, that's part of your research you're doing, your.
Your managing the project.
Your project management as well as your research. And to me, that's the way we have to look at this is you have to have that before you spend twelve point nine million dollars. And more.
Plus, that's not common in rural.
Correct.
Or the dry system.
We are, you know, we're talking, we're banding about numbers rather quickly here. Five million loan, twelve million, you know, a hundred thousand for this. I think we all agree that all these things are really good. I love the GIS tools and all that stuff. I've seen that demo before. All looks great. I think we're all interested in this stuff. We all agree that these projects, these twenty-eight projects have to be done at some point in the next, let's say, five years or so. I don't know, I don't think we can say that we're all on board with, tonight, with a five million dollar bond issue and, or a twelve million dollar infrastructure improvement. I think, I mean, we're throwing these numbers out, but right now, we're just speculating. I think, for myself, I just want to slow down a little bit here. We're throwing a lot, you're laying a lot of stuff on us in the last two hours. For me, the way I make decisions, I let them circulate a little bit. And I know, you know, Ruben has talked to me, I'm sure you've talked to the other trustees and, but anyways, for some of you going real fast like this, making a decision, twelve million dollars in two hours, that's not how I.
You're not going to make a decision. We're moving the way you would.
Okay.
We're moving slow.
All right. Trustee Gonzalez had a question, I think.
And that was the only other thing that I had for Russ too, is this is all can be done in modules too. So we start with, you know, the utilities with, you know, the first year and then we need to move on to the, where the ordinances and all that, all can be done in modular.
Exactly. I mean, you can't afford everything all at once. Again, you need to budget for this as well. As we're doing that five-year plan, you need to put money away to do this. Some of the things you need right away, and maybe you decide what those are, but the rest of it, we need to sit down and say, what are we going to do next year, the year, the year after that?
So some of the data that was in yours too, that you said that can be gotten free from the state and the county and the, you know, the PIN numbers and everything, that's all something that you all will plug in then for us and then, you know, upload it like C three files or?
Instantly, yeah. Instantly, you'll have some.
And you guys will be able to do that. It's not our stamp responsible.
No, no, we do that for you and train you and all those other things. Go ahead. I was just going to say, Ruben, what I heard you ask, if I heard correctly, you were asking for some counsel from us as to moving forward with GIS. My response to that would be, yeah, I'd like to see us move forward. You have to tell us how much you want. That should be the next thing to be made. But I think.
No, you're good, you're good. And I respect what Trustee Horn is also saying there. I mean, I wouldn't want any of you to take casually a million here, a million there. I mean, that's not so whimsical that it's just like, you know. But to go along with what Trustee Pop was chiming in on, if we're not creating the management piece for the departments to deal with, to have a way to track and project and do those types of things, we're going to be chasing our pieces of paper everywhere on DJ's desk. And I don't know if you had a chance to go to DJ's office, but he's got more papers than I care to track. I guess my point is, is that if you're asking for approval to spend right now potentially adjusted prices based on things that are included, I know personally, one of the things I want to see. I, I wanna see, aside from the three items that you listed there, I personally wanna see that we're taking a focus on economic development responsiveness through these types of tools. And I know that's not an overnight process. We're in the heat of trying to deal with just making sure we're gathering the right data from our business licensing for this year. Otherwise, it's gonna be another year before we even have an opportunity. But I know that if you ask the right questions on the front end or move forward with all that, but that's something I wanna see sooner than later as well. And I know the other stuff is important to Public Works. We got a whole department that doesn't even exist yet when it comes to economic development. And we're hurting when it comes to having ready resources. We've had, just so the board knows, we've had people calling us because of the WLS Act. We have not been able to, they have not found the information as Russ indicated readily accessible for them to say, oh, this is what I need to know if I'm gonna move my business to Moni. We've been helping them gather the information, but for them to be able to go there and say, you've got redundant commed resources, or you've got fiber, you've got all the infrastructure related things that are just, when you're, when you're saying at a hotel as an example, on travel, you wanna, do they have a pool, do they have all this stuff? You'd be able to find that same type of amenities, if you will, for a business that wants to locate to, to Moni. So that's the reason why, because that's how you help fund this, through not raising our rates as much as raising our base. And that's my, my thought on this is, you're gonna spend a little bit of money here and there, but if you're doing those things, not just to minimize labor and potential poor management because we're relying on broken systems, but if you're actually building a, utilizing a system that affords us the ability to do this in such a way that we're building a broader base to tax from, not raising the rates per se, or not raising the, the water rates or whatever the things are like that, we expand our ability without burdening anybody who lives here or does business here already. So that's the reason why I wanna see as part of whatever we do, we always keep the economic development as a part of that. That's just a.
Can I maybe just make a suggestion? I know the three items that we talked about, I think everybody agrees through the water and storm, we definitely gotta have economic development. I think that's the next most important thing. We're in 55 or 60 and then upgrade it, whatever, it's two years old, that's it. It would be, would it be out of thought to say, let's do a project not to exceed $100,000 and take the economic development as far as it'll go with 100,000 and then next year you'll know, what do we need to budget, how far did we get? And we'll keep you, you know, up to date in a, you know, on a monthly basis of where we're at and where we're gonna get to, and now you've got at least a budget item to get going.
And then let me just ask this from you as a vendor. What is the potential turnaround time for us realizing any real benefit? There's gonna be the burden on the input from the beginning. You're already gathering, you already have some data obviously, but what can we expect? I mean, no matter when we start this, assuming that the board agrees to start this, when, six months, a year, two years, when do we expect to see the real benefit of this?
The important thing about this atlas is, is we gotta get out before the snow flies and, you know, when's that gonna happen? We don't know. If, if we're lucky, we can get all that data located before the snow fly. Then those buffalo boxes that DJ was talking about couldn't find, we will solve that problem for this year and that in itself will save you a lot of money. We could be working on the economic development simultaneously by gathering all of that data. It doesn't necessarily require being out in the field. And so I don't wanna speak for Ed, but are we looking at three months to start showing something tangible and then it's gonna get bigger on a monthly basis? Is that?
I, I would say that what we showed you there for, or you just basically have a dialogue button, you're checking the items off and then it develops the search tool and the demographics and all that, that would be, you could complete that in about nine months.
So within a year theoretically, one way or the other, we would expect to have something more readily available that would actually serve our potential?
Yeah, but I think going back to the three months of the atlases and giving a tangible document to start with is probably something we could.
But you know, one thing.
You're talking about finishing it in nine months.
One thing I should say is while we're putting an easy to use interface together for the economic development, we would already have gotten the data, okay? So if something came up in the interim before we deployed it here, you guys could still ask us to do some, some research, which we could do the manual way, cause it's not finished yet, but it would still be a great benefit to you, you know?
So, go ahead.
And my question too is, I was talking about doing this modularly then too. So I would ask too, I think for myself, you know, moving slowly too, before we give the okay to spend 100, up to 100,000, I would like to say something in writing about this project, that this is how much this is, this is how much this is, this is how much this is by our next.
Fair enough, yeah.
Absolutely.
And just so that we're all aware, so that we would know not only the storm, the sanitary and the water, but all the other features that you would bring under one hood, so to speak, for us to have at our fingertips for Public Works and primarily Public Works right now, those parcel information that's readily available that you didn't integrate, those are things where it's not listed here.
Right.
But I'm assuming those are all base components that are gonna be incorporated into this and that's just gonna be that conversion portion you're talking about.
That's right. There's a lot of things you haven't even seen that you will automatically get. You know it because you've seen this before, but hovering over a piece of property and clicking on it and getting all that data will be there. We didn't list it, but it just will come across that way. So there's a lot of benefit pretty quickly.
Is there any money into this year's budget that's put in for GIS at all? There is some money, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I would also like to add basically piggybacking on what Trustee Horn, Trustee Gonzalez said. We walked in tonight with a sheet of paper. Tonight we walk in, and I picked my packet up at nine o'clock last night, we have all this information sitting on our desk. Obviously you've had these conversations. We don't get this information as trustees. How can we digest, again, the big numbers and, you know, we, you know, like Trustee Horn said, we're not just gonna jump into it. I like the fact that, okay, maybe we'll, you know, we'll talk about the first plan of $100,000, but seeing it on paper, I mean, you could write a lot of stuff for less than an hour and a half, but it's gotta soak in. We need to be able to have time to digest this. To walk in with just, okay, here it is on the agenda, but we don't know where we're going with this.
I, I, I don't disagree with any of those concerns at all. I know that.
Why we didn't present a figure yet?
Right.
Because we wanted to make sure that you guys were on board with GIS. We could go through it, we'll get the numbers presented from Robinson and then we'll have them for the next board meeting.
So if, if I could, Larry, help me out on this. If I could not to be presumptuous and not to expect the board to make a decision on a lack of information, but to give the board more time to digest things and to actually have this paper at hand to review a written proposal for the board to digest regarding all this, can I at least get a general consensus that the board's in favor of going this direction, be it now or somewhere down the road, so that we at least can identify with our vendors that this is something we would like to see happen and maybe we throttle our, our, you know, our expectations so we can phase into it more appropriately so it's not all in one big chunk. Superintendent Cruzella identified that there is some budgeted resources for that. Daryl's not here, but, you know, we could review with him to make sure how much is readily available in the budget and how much would come out of the general fund, the budget portion, how much would come out of other areas to subsidize even the, the management mapping, if you will, of all this.
Get a consensus.
So that, I guess what I'm asking for is a general consensus that board is inclined to move forward with a GIS concept, whether we have it in writing to agree to at this moment. I, I just.
So perhaps Ruben wording it to us like that rather than say, moving ahead with a project, this was a presentation tonight, it doesn't say anything moving ahead. So perhaps giving us the wording saying that, can I have a consensus on, can we move forward with this project rather than ask for the project, okay?
So I'll, I'll put it in that terminology and I'll ask for a consensus?
Consensus subject to the approval of the proposal submitted by Robinson.
For, for review of future meeting.
At the December 10th meeting.
Okay.
So that way you get.
Is that feasible to have something ready for?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Is it feasible for us to get it tonight before a couple of?
Yeah. We've been running into problems and just so everybody's aware, I, I respect the concerns of the trustees. We, we've had some technical issues at times.
If it ain't to me, I can't, I can't put it in the back of.
Right.
Okay, so.
And again, I'm just. We've all been, we've all been suffering from some of this.
I, I put down a mandate for January 1st I'm gonna stick to, because I'm, Michelle and I work our butts off later, but it ain't to you. I'm sorry, we can't give you a real.
No, I don't.
And Trustee. Trustee Gray, just so you're aware, I didn't see this until I sat down here.
Well, and that's, and that's fine. I'm not saying to try to hide it there, I'm just saying so we have time to soak it in.
I get it, I get it. And there again, I think even going back to when Fartherth gave a presentation and we'd asked for some pre-information, it was easier when they made their presentation to present it all publicly and let us digest it after the fact, which is what we did with the roundabout concept and all that. And there's, sometimes there is the benefit of, if you go through this, you may or may not necessarily get the same impact. And so let's not take a vote on the spending of, of these issues tonight, but let's at least identify whether we can give some affirmative momentum to the concept. So if I could get a, Larry, get a consensus?
Consensus to have Robinson submit a proposal to be reviewed by the board at the December 10th meeting regarding the GIS.
I'll entertain a, a motion?
No move.
Second.
Holston. Brokaw.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Moore.
Yes. No. Mr. Batista had a, a second question and I'll, I'm assuming that that is also because of the bonding that's associated with what we expect on some of these issues. I don't know that we can actually make a decision on that either based on the concerns of time to digest this. Is it suitable for the board to take the next week and digest what you've heard tonight during the week? If you have questions or further information you need to gather pertaining to the bonding, can you perhaps contact Mr. Batista sooner than later? And, and then again, a, so that, where'd he go? There he is, I'm sorry. So that the bonding agency can know whether or not they need to continue to participate in these dialogues or not. Can I get a consensus from the board that we are, and just to remind the board, we did budget for bonding to the tune of 3.?
I wrote 2.3.
Yeah, 2.3. We did do, we already had, but put it in this year's budget, which by next year, whatever else, by the time we actually get the, what's the term on time for actually getting the money out first? If we told you today yes, how long would it take?
Yeah, three or four months.
So we're almost being in the next budget year before we even realize the revenue from the, the money to work with on that, the capital to work with on that. Again, a consensus we're looking for at this point to continue the dialogue with the bonding company for you to digest this will, I'm looking for a consensus to, or maybe you could just simply say to table this until the next meeting for, for this particular issue with the bonding or a consent to dialogue this further or what do we want out there?
If I may, Mayor, SEC rules and regulations don't permit Tom or any other underwriter to proceed with any transaction unless there's a formal letter of engagement. Those are regulations that are hard and heavy. So what you can do is just put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. Mr. Gavin or any underwriter doesn't get paid unless the bond deal goes forward.
That's the good part.
Yeah, he can put all the time and the work and into it, but unless the deal goes forward and the deal's signed, he doesn't get paid. So what you can do is put it on the agenda for further review. He can submit a proposal. There's no financial obligation from the village at this point in time. You pay him if the deal goes forward. Deal doesn't go forward, he doesn't get paid.
So could we ask, I'm sorry, your, your first name again?
Tom.
Tom. Could we ask that you would prepare a document?
Sure.
For the board to review in the next couple of days if possible? And the, the board could have that to review and so that at our next meeting they'll have had more time to digest that.
Absolutely.
Again, we wanna be careful out of respect for the people that are coming in as vendors or whatever else, that they're not just doing all the light work and then we say, sorry, go away. We wanna be respectful of their time commitment and all that they're doing. So is that okay with the board that we?
So just motion to table? Can we do that?
Time to review until the next meeting?
Yes, sir. You can say motion to table to December 10th, subject to Mr. Gavin submitting a letter of engagement for further review at the December 10th meeting.
Along with some exhibits if you can to explain the, the numbers that you had indicated while you were talking there. I mean, I know that Ross.
Right.
But we need, excuse me, we need to get the administration to tell us of that 12.9, what do you wanna spend, when do you wanna spend it and where are you gonna get it from? That's what, that's what Trustee Gray, Trustee Gonzalez were saying, the same thing. Give us your plan. His part's the easiest part, but how much do you wanna spend, when do you wanna spend it and where's it gonna come from? Bring that to us, give it to us a few days ahead of time so we can actually digest it. We can sit there and make decisions. Shake your head and up.
Oh, I say yes, I say not by the next board meeting.
Well, whatever you wanna prove. I mean, I, I agree with Trustee Horn. If, if we have the information where we can actually look at, then we can, right now you're asking for 12.9, but there's no, there's no suggestion on what part is gonna be spent when, what the prior, you know, we, we have a kind of a tentative priority, but when do you want it? Where's the money coming from? We gotta have that.
Uh, Mr. Batista?
Yeah, just if I could, the, the 12.9 is just to give you an idea of the overall, all the projects over the next several years, so it's not.
I understand, I understand.
Without the GIS mapping, we're not able to give you those hard numbers. These are just rough estimates. And so the 5.1 is what we have pulled out that is not gonna be covered by TIF, MFT or EPA loan. Now there's, you did bring out in the budget, there is money that's allotted for roads and bridges. And so over the next few years, some of that, a large portion actually would be able to be used and this 5 million would come down. But that 5 million is just a number to put out there as, as the worst case scenario. We're hoping that, and we haven't touched much money yet with the projects other than patching and upgrades, but there's 2.4 million that's appropriated. We're going into another budget year in April, we'll, we'll decide that. So we're hoping by then in the next three or four months, we're gonna have.
But the 2.4, just to clarify, that 2.4 was on the premise that we were gonna bond for that 2.4.
Correct.
And we haven't yet done that, which theoretically could upset our budget.
Correct.
Because that was the board's expectation.
If we don't spend it.
Well, no, I understand. And now.
But it has to go to the next year.
Well, and we did that the year before. We, we, we put it in the budget for a bond that never surfaced. So we need to identify how is this going to affect our operations and again, going back to Jeff, he was giving a presentation about the roads, each year that we don't do proper maintenance on the roads, I don't know.
We know where the cost goes up, there's no doubt about it.
Right. Right. I think, Russ, you indicated that it potentially goes four times the cost over time.
I agree with all of that, I just.
So I, and I'm not pushing one way or the other, I just think those are variables we need to be aware of.
Give us your plan.
My bottom line is, if I may say, Mr. Batista, my bottom line is, pick your priorities. I wanna know what it's gonna cost to people, one way or the other. Show me this way and that way. I wanna know what it's gonna cost the taxpayer. That's the biggest item for me.
Agreed.
Okay? I need to know that. I can't make a decision without it. And they're not gonna like it when I make it. Okay? Depending on the amount too. It's still gonna be an amount, okay?
Infrastructure.
And that, that was kinda why we said, I was saying, I couldn't get it by the next board meeting, because there is a lot of variables that we don't wanna.
I need a real.
We don't wanna tax the residents for commercial.
I understand, dude. That's why I said.
Understood.
Yeah.
And I will say this, I personally will not be an advocate of doing any of this bonding or E P A or whatever else is ultimately gonna have any impact on our residents, our businesses, unless we can actually do what, it'll look like it must have been South Island, the two of my notes on the background there, what they have been able to do, and that is actually communicate to the people, this is this project and this is approximately when it's gonna be done. Because people have these concerns and complaints, what do they get for their tax money? Most of that, Middle East School District, we know that. But we have to be responsible for our portion, and they wanna know, what are they getting for that money they're paying directly and indirectly or whatever else to this taxing body? We have to be accountable and responsible and communicate effectively on that. And unless we're going to actually be able to implement a communication tool to let people know, all right, here's how you're gonna get your stormwater management issues over in the Highlands, here's the Eagle Fair issues, things like that, until we're actually able to give them a timetable, some accountability to us, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be in agreement for doing anything that's gonna affect the property taxes. I'm just saying you all, so you all know, and I think we're all on the same page in that. So we do need to have a better idea. I don't know if, D J's indicated that by this meeting, it might be tough for the administration to come up with better numbers. I don't know what that does to us, we're basically waiting another month, not for the G I S, but for the bonding. I'm not sure what that does to us on some of those things.
Well, the bonding clearly, you know, from Tom's presentation, if we do go out for bonds, it's gonna be on our tax bills, clearly.
Agree. But I'm saying is, there's two different timetables in play. We need the G I S concept, if you will, to help us manage our current predicament, whatever that may be, good or bad, as well as our potential or destination. The bonding is what we're gonna need to move forward to correct any of those measures and maintain what we currently have and keep it from getting further deteriorated in some cases. So, I mean, the alternative is, we just do the best we can to do everything but bond and rely on the other areas and not service those areas. And here's the problem, if we only service, service those areas that we have alternate funds for, say the T I F areas or stuff like that, we're not gonna take care of the Highlands, we're not gonna take care of Eagle Fair, Gulf, country...
Well, we have a balanced budget, and the budget that we have this year doesn't touch any of that, so...
It actually does.
Not to this extent.
No, not to that extent, about half of that.
Yeah.
Right. But my point is, if we say we don't wanna bond anything and we only wanna go after those things that are funded through other means, you could do that, but then the ones that are gonna be the, the ones that are gonna not be positively affected, if you will, are gonna be the residents.
Yes, absolutely.
So...
Question?
The one positive thing, I have to throw this in real quick, David, you have nothing to do, I know that, okay? But with that G I S, it's already been mentioned that you would save labor hours. I have enough faith in you that you can hit your computer and figure out how many hours you've spent looking for things before you cut a hole somewhere and this and that. Give us a little hit on that, let us know what kinda money you, you may project. And it's a guess, and I understand that, but there will be a savings labor-wise for you in a year. And I'd like to know approximately what that number, just to make me feel better, okay? You see what I'm saying?
Well, and Trustee Pop, just so you're aware, it's not just the amount of time it saves, but it's also the fact that you've got water problems that are not being fixed while...
It's economic development too, it's all that, Mayor, I understand that.
Right.
But this is real money saved right away.
Mr. Batista, we've answered the question about G I S for now. Larry, I've kinda lost track of the question, I apologize. Help me out here on bonding, if I work this time.
I thought we were just on the table. There's no obligation from the village whatsoever from Mr. Gavin right now. He can give an engagement letter to the village for further review. They'll also present some numbers as to, there's a lot of work to do in O S. No obligation from the village, but if you wanna keep it rolling, at least you put it on the agenda for further review. He gave a scenario, three, three million, four million, five million, he knows what the rates are, and the board can decide. The rates are, you're not gonna get them any lower right now. And using Mr. Gavin before on different deals, it takes a good two or three months to get all the information you need in the O S. This is a G O bond, so, you know, it's not like a revenue bond, and it's a whole different ballgame. But if you do the engagement letter, you put it on for the board's review, and then you can do the same.
Good. So I believe, Mr. Batista, you've been tasked also with gathering a more specific plan so that the board can digest. I know we've got the priority list given to us by Tyson, but just so we have an idea of, say, the five point one that we're thinking about bonding at this point, where, what the priorities are of that, where those are gonna directly affect the, say, the residents. I think that's one of the biggest concerns, because they're the ones that are gonna be more vocal than anybody else. So with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to merely table the bonding issue for now until the next meeting or subsequent, and so that we can further digest all that we're going to be tied to that.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Yeah.
Who's that?
I'm...
I made a motion.
Anybody second?
Second.
Holston?
Roco?
Trustee Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Your honor, anything that we do tonight, if you want, if you want something done for the next meeting, that means tomorrow's Thursday, we need to have the packets out on Friday for the trustees' review.
They'll just be on the agenda.
So I think it's silly to aim for, I think we should be looking for the seventeenth.
Well, we don't have a meeting for the seventeenth.
Well, I'm just saying, the next meeting is, is the tenth.
It's...
And we're, we're back into the same thing where the trustees aren't getting the packets, they're looking for the clerk's office, and that's not fair to the vendors, because they have tomorrow to put this together.
All right, let me, we put it out there, if the vendors can perform in that turnaround time, that's great. I'm not necessarily anticipating a vote to be taken to move forward on the bonding on the tenth, based on what the climate out here tonight. I would hope that maybe we'd be ready to make a decision on the G I S for the tenth, provided we get the resources we need. Because I believe our staff actually needs to provide more support to the trustees for the bonding-related concerns. So I don't think we're gonna be ready for it, but by putting it on the agenda, it allows us to keep it there until we do have time to receive the data. So if you don't have it in your packet, I'm fine with it being tabled till the next meeting, whatever that would be.
At least if it's on the agenda, just for discussion, for the discussion, so we[1760.51]